And they, every week, they put out information about what the jobs are, the highest, what do they call them, the highest paid, the highest in demand, those three things that they looked at.
I don't remember that, but I do remember the job that said, or constantly, persistently on top, were like plumbers, electricians, areas like.
Construction, truck driving, nursing, I mean, those were things that are.
For the area, or?
Yeah, yeah, they'll look at, you know, they'll look at the whole state, but they, what they were focusing on some of these Nebraska at the time with our discussion. Then they would like to have kids, like, train local, train with other, like I said, either job shadowing with other plumbers, or construction, or that's the, that is their intent.
That's a, that's a survey that we had, where we got, mentioned job shadowing, would be nice, student, the alumni, said that they would like to have more job shadowing. And that's something that's ridiculous, there's with me some, I think, we're trying to do a little better at it, but, yeah.
I was just gonna bring up at the meeting too, one of the super tenants said that he was contacted by, I'm not gonna name the company, but it was an air conditioning and heating company, that said, you know, it must be because they're looking for workers, but they were willing to put equipment in a classroom from that company if we taught their class, and that kind of a class.
The college said that too, that, he gave an example of forklift divers, but, a business has to, when they hire somebody new that doesn't know how to use equipment, they have to train them, so they're losing work time, and whoever else is training them, they're losing work time, they will put simulators in high schools, uh, for free, they will donate simulators for high schools, if they know that their kids are gonna come out and they don't have to spend their time and their money on the job training them, that they already know how to work that particular machine. That businesses will, like you said, donate those in order to have the workforce one step more ahead of coming in on the job. So, I, I was very encouraged just by the discussion of, of keeping the kids, getting them experience that they need, getting a heads up on, on whether, and talk a lot about career development, which is the starting field, and go through the junior high, and not everybody needs to know by the time they get to be in the ninth grade, but if they at least have the opportunity to take some of these classes and know, I wanna be a nurse, but, I mean, the, the math in the nursing is more than what I wanna do, so maybe I wanna do this instead, um, you know, um, I, you know, like I said, the math in itself, um, if you're going to a health field, the math that you take is totally different if you're going into a technology field, and be appropriate with those types of things.
I'll tell you, I already know of that, we have an hog equipment salesman that was a nurse, now he's a.
So step up there.
Well, I don't think he'd be working for less, you know, so, I mean, I, now we got, no, what'd he used to do, I was a nurse.
Well, there's, you know, and there are a lot of people as adults that do change careers, much more so than used to be, and it, um, the same types of things could be offered at a middle education level.
Sometimes you have to be careful when, when you're talking about those career educations, 'cause like you say, they do change a lot.
Yes.
If you start taking and changing to a more basic math and some of that kinda stuff, it works for one type of career, but it does not work for other types of career.
Right.
And so, you have to be real careful when, when you decide to do that, and, and in the essence, lower your requirements for some situations, because we don't know what jobs they're gonna be in.
Right, yep.
Yeah, I forget who I was talking to the other night, they said, it was a daughter, but she wanted to be a doctor, but she didn't do well on the, whatever test you gotta take to move into that level, but somehow they're opened up, she's looking at just specializing in watching the heart during surgery, I mean, it's, it's just one field of a career, thought she was gonna, would be such a, you know, it's big demand. I know you and I've talked about, you know, what's frustrating, if we're doing a good job in a lot of education areas, we educate these kids to leave the community, as they will go into a medical field, or some sort of field that doesn't exist in, in the real community, so you, you gotta struggle there, and, um, if you don't offer, you know, if that's all you're offering, that's where you're gonna steer them to, but if you can open it up to electricians and house, then you got a chance of pulling some of those kids back, but if that's all you're offering, that's where they're gonna go, they're gonna go where the jobs are, and that's, that's what we've been doing.
I thought it was interesting, I was just a dentist last week, my dentist seems to be technology pre-oriented, but it was the first time they took x-rays, and they don't get just a regular x-ray, it goes up on a computer now.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
They got a real panel last year, and I just kept it on the screen.
It's just a different thing, you know, that way, it's the way that happens. Krista and Mike, did they get anything on the curriculum meeting?
They wanted to do more playing with it, yet it wasn't definitely anything set, they were still looking at other, other classes and stuff to add to it, just kind of start.
One of the things that was brought up at the, at the curriculum meeting, and that was also talked about at the committee meeting, was, was revision grant, which is through the career, career education, and each of the five schools have applied for that grant, and it's, it's a five thousand dollar grant at this time, um, for us, it could be, I think, be very, very timely, because with our switch from a fourth period day to an eighth period day, we're gonna need to be adjusting some of those classes in vocational agriculture and family consumer science, so that we get, you know, proper sequences in classes and that type of thing, so it's gonna work out real well, and also with looking ahead, if, if something would go with this five school thing, what can we do with, what we can do with that. There's also an opportunity through that to, not just the five thousand dollars, each of the schools, the eligible for at this time, but, uh, there's also some additional money, I think it's like fifty thousand dollars more for each school, as a follow-up to that, depending on what's done, and, and there's, might be some money to help, you know, some different things with that, so.
I'll just comment, a lot of times I criticize you, Brooke, but I, I'm glad you're putting these minutes and that on the front page of the paper, uh, 'cause it stimulates discussion that the board needs to have from people, so, whether it's, whatever, I mean, we need, we need to know, 'cause the biggest frustration you have is you show up and people say, well, I didn't know anything about this, but, hey, if he's got it on the front page of the paper, we can only say, hey, it was there.
And that was a big part of our discussion at the committee meeting too, is how to get it out to people as many ways as you can, because not everybody does the computer, not everybody gets the paper.
No.
You know, how do you get it to them, other than the coffee shop, you know?
Yeah, you know, I think the website's a real positive thing, but the reality is not, there's a percentage of people who are never gonna go to that website.
Well, I think, Mr. Alt and I were talking about this the other night, when we have these meetings, um, maybe in the future, they're gonna have to allow the press to come into those meetings and not participate in the meeting.
Right.
But to record the meeting, and anything that's going on in the meeting, without participating.
I was saying the same thing, if each town, school district brought three, four, five town members, district members with them, that could sit in and not participate.
Right, maybe they have to have a bigger place, but.
Yeah, but then they can bring that back and help spread what they heard.
Right, and again, maybe not participate, that's part of the reason that they've kind of been, the way they're kind of now, but that way they can, they can pose those questions when they come back to local board, public meetings and things like that, so.
In the past, the reason you, but, yours I mean, you steer away from it, is a committee discussion is just what it is, a discussion.
Right.
And a lot of times you can come out of there and say, well, they're gonna do this, that wasn't, it was just discussed, you know, it.
And you can't really make decisions in there anyway.
No, I mean, but, but you want open discussion, you know, you want.
Right.
Different things brought up, you know, so, but, anyway.
Anyone else? First action item is signing the committee members, if that's what we're gonna do here. Marilyn has always said she wants to be on the curriculum instructions, so is she that someone you want?
Yeah, if you want me to, I'll be here next year.
Someone's gotta do it.
Just because you're.
You're just not gonna, or you're gonna be here.
Yeah, just to be on the committee.
Absolutely, like that.
Okay, anyone else have preferences?
I guess I would lean towards the arch, the architecture part of the process.
I was probably thinking about economic labor.
Okay, so you got legal?
This is working on, isn't it? Now, are we supposed to have two people on any call?
Yeah, supposed to have one, and then.
An alternate?
An alternate, but, I mean, you can call anybody as, as an alternate, I think. Is there one you wanna be on there, sir?
Oh, what was my choice, didn't you?
Investigative, that's the last one.
The investigative one, if that's, to me, that's a little bit hard to, maybe get a grasp of what's involved with that, and I'm not sure I understand for sure, but I think the intent with that was, that committee would maybe contact other school districts than that, maybe gone through mergers and those kinds of things.
I can do that.
Or, you know, talk to them, okay, how did you handle transportation issues, how did you handle different things like that, so it'd be probably some contacts along those lines.
He would be good at that, anyway, could you have a lot of contact with other schools?
Yeah, no, and the fat dos and hastings, they're just for the last month, and I wanna go out to Adam Central, you know what I mean, and just go look at that school, you know, I mean, 'cause that's what it amounts to, is take some people to some of these, because this isn't a new concept, I mean, maybe the scope of it is, but, there've been mergers going on, and new schools built for a long time here, so, yeah, no, I agree with that.
Okay, did you get all those images?
I did.
All right, and, and if anybody can't make it, they're, what, they start having committee names, just give me a call.
You wanna do an Alderman for each one?
Um, yeah, no, the alternate, that's fine, yeah. Okay, that's taken care of.
Krista, I'm, I'm sorry, are you gonna do an Alderman for each one?
Oh, she's gonna be the alternate.
You're gonna be the Alderman for each one?
Yeah, and then, well, my.
Calling everyone.
You know, and, yeah.
No, that's, that's fine, as long as we have somebody, you know, we can call, if somebody can't make it, so.
Right, I mean, we've got, yeah, and, they can call me, and I can, if I can't, I can call someone, please. All right, that's good, thank you. Um, the next item is hiring a new kindergarten teacher, Mr. Alt.
Okay, I recommend hiring Catherine Wox, Catherine's from Page, Nebraska, I think I mentioned her, she's got an elementary, early childhood degree, and also a, I think it was a second language.
Did she just graduate, or?
Just ahead of that, yeah. Well, it's, yeah, I mean, you could run into a situation, we never know, like, your student goes in and can't speak English or something, good to have somebody on staff, and that'd be very nice.
Make a motion to hire Catherine Wox as kindergarten teacher for the 14th, 15th school year.
Second.
It's been moving second, roll call, Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn, yes, Vicki, yes, Bob?
Yes.
Mike, yes, myself, yes.
How we doing on the music situation?
Uh, does that come in?
It, well, I was gonna address my superintendent, right, I'll, I can talk about it right now, uh, call the gal to see if she's interested in coming in for an interview, we have a, uh, possibly Osman, would be interested to us for sharing, so, I talked to Mr. Hamm over there, and, uh, Vicki's the one that kinda told me about this, uh, she thought the young lady was getting married, she got married this weekend, so, uh, she is taking a short honey motion, said she thought she'd be back Wednesday, and I just, I told her, that, that's fine, we can wait until she get back, give her a call, if she get back, and then we'll talk, I kinda told Dave the same thing, so.
Okay.
We'll get her in and then, uh, talk through her as soon as she gets back, so. We'd be looking at, like, three quarter time total with that, I think it'll work out pretty well, because Osman needs some, some help with some elementary classes right in the middle of the day, so she can come here, second period, go over there, and then come back here, I think it's like seventh period we would need her again, so we work something out that way, it might be a pretty good guess.
Will they still get music however many days that they worked in here, or are we gonna cut that?
I think, I think it'd be left the same, Krista, I'm not sure, I had it with that schedule together, so I'm not sure, but I think it's the same.
Next is discuss approval, second reading, board policy 508, point sixteen, food allergies.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, food allergy policy that we talked about last month, um, that was for first reading, we need to have a second reading on it, I did not make any changes on it, um, I did send a policy to Mr. and Mrs. who we do, and they commented back, they thought it was, they didn't have any problems with it, so, unless the board has something else with it that they would like to see changed, and, and once again, try to write the policy so that it will be, uh, we can adapt it to different situations, if we have a changing need, where there's a possibility another year or two, we may have a, a peanut allergy that's even more severe, or we may need to go to a, um, school-wide type thing, where we don't allow, you know, peanut, or, you know, whatever it is, but, in that case, we just have to redefine what those, what the rules are gonna be at that point.
But no, you know this, or the curriculum, or this, do we have the new EpiPens that tell people how to use them?
I just heard the other day that they have those, um, I'm, I'm sure our nurse will probably be talking to me about that, but I, we'll probably look at those, yeah, evidently it's a, it must be like the A and D machine, once you start it, it just tells you what to do, which would really be a good, a good thing, especially to people that either, you know, haven't ever used them before, and are not real comfortable.
How many EpiPens do we have in each building?
Two adult.
Can you answer that?
Two adult, two feeding each building.
I'm making a motion, we approve on second reading, board policy 508, point one to six on food allergy.
I'll second.
It's been moving seconded, roll call, Vicki?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The next policy is the student fees, four, five oh four, point nineteen.
Okay, the student fee policy has to be reviewed every year, according to state statutes, again, I do not have any recommended changes for the policy, basically what the student fees policy is for, if you have a student who qualifies for career reduced lunches, and they don't feel, or the parents don't feel that they can afford maybe, you know, expenses to participate in activity, uh, there, there's a medium through this policy that the district could step in and, uh, help them, you know, maybe waiver of fees or whatever it is, so that, uh, a child isn't kept from participating in something because of financial hardship.
It's not mandatory, it's just.
No, it is not mandatory.
So if they change that to where the whole school is on, on the lunch?
Yeah.
Which is everybody.
We're, we're not applying for that, so.
Oh, you have to apply, it's not.
I think, I think you have to apply for it, say you wanna participate, and we're not.
Oh, okay.
I'm making a motion, we read up, board policy five oh four, point one nine, on student fees, presented.
I'll second, it's been moving second, and roll call, Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Marilyn, yes, Alden?
Yes.
And Vicki, yes. Okay, um, the next items, Mr. Alt, you wanna talk about those, or how?
I don't know, I'm up till or not, it's gonna be a long, long discussion, I kinda wrestled with the best way to handle this, it's what I finally decided to do, that I, I approved the policies together, on those that require just, like, a first reading this month and a second reading next month, we'll do those kind of together, and those that we, I think we can abide with the first and second reading, we'll lump those together as far as motion, but, I would like to go through and talk about each of these, uh, just to explain to the board a little bit about, you know, changes in the policy, or if it's a new policy, what it is, and what the policy is for. The first one, five oh two, point one five, the full-time and part-time enrollment, last month, uh, we did discuss this situation a little bit, about the possibility of allowing, well, uh, according to statutes, we have to allow students to attend on a part-time basis, uh, the board does have the right to govern, whether they're gonna allow, not allow, or what degree, they will allow participation in extracurricular activities, activities in general, so that's really kinda the, the part of it that, um, we're really addressing with this, uh, what this policy does, is it, um, kinda talks a little bit about the students who, who could be a part-time enrolled, uh, application for enrollment, I did, uh, found a, a copy of a form for application, which I think is, is a good thing to do, this would be done for each semester, in case there's a change in classes after first semester into the second semester, so you would know exactly what a part-time enrolled student wanted to take, um, some of the, uh, things, you know, if, if we were operating at capacity in some of our classes, you know, we would give first priority to students who are full-time students, rather than allowing a part-time student to take a position in a class, uh, we could place the students, you know, where we want them, and grades and academic honors, basically with that, the, uh, students would receive grades, but as far as diploma and that, they would not be receiving diploma unless they'd met all of their, everything that the board sets forth, that they would need to do, they would be, uh, while they're in attendance, they would have to follow all school rules, uh, also with the attendance, if they're gonna be part-time enrolled, they would be basically, have to follow the same things that the other students do as far as attending, I mean, part-time doesn't mean you don't have to attend, if you're gonna be here part-time, and you're gonna take, you know, periods one, two, three, and four, then you would be expected to be here periods one, two, three, and four. And then, and extracurricular activities, and like I indicated, this is where the board really has some leeway, uh, whatever, you know, the board decides, I wrote this policy, um, I, I took examples from the Norfolk policy, and then also Pierce policy, uh, the Norfolk, actually the Pierce, or, excuse me, O'Neill policy is very similar, I'm assuming they come from the same attorney, uh, both of those allow participation in, like, NSA activities, Pierce does not, a part-time student is not allowed to participate in, uh, activities there, so, I, I kinda took a lot from the Pierce policy, we put the part in here about allowing extracurricular activities, uh, hopefully in the policy, it, as you read through it, you would understand, if, if a part, part-time enrolled student, if they wanted to participate in an NSA approved activity, so we're basically talking athletics, they would have to be taking four classes, in other words, they'd have to be half-time, and then with that, they would have to be passing, you know, classes like the other students would, would have to do, uh, as far as participating in an activity, I'm gonna toss band out there as an example, it, band would be, uh, a curricular area, curricular class, a part-time student could, could participate in, say, a concert, as a part-time student, that's not an NSA act, NSA activity, however, to me, the difference would be there, if that student was not, not, say, take, say they were taking two classes, they could participate in our spring concert, but, they could not participate in district music, because district music is an NSA activity, see the difference in, in that type of thing. So, that's kinda the way I, I put the policy together, again, this is just a first reading of it, so if the board wants to make changes in that, that's, uh, the board, I, I just kinda put together what I thought we could, we could do with.
So if our kids are failing two classes, they sit out a week, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if this kid has been homeschooled half his classes, and he's failing two classes at home, how are we even know that he's failing those classes, so he hasn't sustained those that our kids?
Well, if he's gonna participate, he or she is gonna participate in activities, you're gonna have to be in four classes.
In school, yes, but, the other four that he's doing at home.
They probably have to be passing three.
Right, but if he's, if he's not passing three of the classes, he's taking.
Three of our classes.
Correct, but he should have to pass as many as our kids do, but, but my question is, who governs that? Who knows whether he's passing, the state would have to admit they don't.
The state won't know.
I have a policy that will take care of that. I don't think we should offer extracurricular activities to part-time students, I think you have to be a full-time student in our school to be eligible for extracurricular activities. I don't have a problem if they wanna be a part-time student, 'cause the state says we have to do it, but we don't have to let them in on, on extracurricular, and I don't think we should.
So if their other classes is band, you don't think they should be in music?
Band is different, because that's a, if they're in band, then they could be in things that are part of that, they can be in, um.
Spring concerts.
Spring concert, but they can't, they can't go to football games and stuff like that, because that's an NSA, so, 'cause I would assume.
Well, if going to football games not, it's not an NSA activity.
Performer in Miami?
The, it's district music would be an.
It's an extracurricular activity, by my definition.
Well, that maybe happened, clarify, you know.
And I know, if they decide that they wanna go to, have their home school, that's fine, that's, that's their decision, but they, they can't, they don't need, we don't need to let them, I don't think.
Aren't, aren't you.
Plus, we have to change all of the rules for all this stuff, they shouldn't be any different than anybody else, if you go here, full-time, you can come to anything you want, if you don't, then you can't.
Aren't you depriving a kid that maybe his parents aren't allowing him to come here, but he really wants to do these other things, you're depriving the kid.
Well, your parents are making this, they always have that right, they always have that right.
So my question is, can, can a, a child just attend one class?
They can just attend one class.
I think we've had, some of that happen, I think, in fire, some kid went to just music.
I think there was some music in the past, I think.
I can agree with Bob, but I'm gonna disagree, just because, if, I like his, I like his concept that, you know, you know, he should be dedicated enough to the school, but, I guess as I look, if we, you know, it's not a state, but if we, I mean, if we had this combined situation, I think you could, education attendance could change dramatically to the fact that, if, if my kid has to drive twenty-five miles to school, the reality is, maybe he only attends school three days a week, and everything else is done at home, online, or whatever, um, the other thing is, we, we truly aren't offering some kids the opportunity to maybe participate in an educational level that they want to, so, I mean, it could, you know, we've employed, I don't know how many kids over the years, a lot, and, you know, we've always had the work-study, and that's all been defined, should it be expanded, I don't know, I just think you should give it to the opportunity, just to the fact that our education has become so diverse that that kid could learn possibly more, working at someplace downtown for two hours, and that's part of his education path, 'cause as far as his homeschooling, you know, he, he could be doing that before he even comes to school here in the morning, or he could be doing it at six o'clock at night, I mean, that's, that's the prerogative of the home school, I mean, that's.
Right.
That's the purpose of it, but, so I, I don't know, I, you know, I'm torn both ways, Bob, I, I'd like to say, hey, you know, we got one policy, this is our school, this is our education system, if you wanna be in these extracurricular activities.
Well, I think you make a, a real strong effort to have great academics here in our school, and if they aren't good enough, that's fine.
Yeah.
You always have that option, and the, what state says we have to do it, well, it doesn't, we don't have to do it on extracurricular.
So the extracurricular, but FFA is extracurricular.
That would be an extracurricular.
Say, and there's one of them that's, you know, if, if, he could be more active in FFA and not attending, you know, not attending school here full-time, and he could be more active in FCLA, and other, a couple other extracurricular activities, uh.
Brooke, do you have a comment?
Doesn't apply this year, because they got rid of their junior high, but, would the, how would this affect Zion kids from participating, would it affect Zion kids from participating, since they're technically not educated by our school system, if they had a junior high, or if they had a high school, would they be able to participate in junior high or high school athletics with us?
I think junior high is not, has not been regulated by the NSA to start with, so, unless they would get into that, I don't think.
Well, they are, they are in a lot of competition.
In terms of numbers of games, and things like that.
They are, they are, junior high can only have so many.
That's by the state of Nebraska.
Yeah, that's the state.
That is, that is changed, yeah.
Okay, so.
A lot of that was governed by rule ten, I think.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
Well, I understand what you're saying about two, but I also know, and it's my education background with, that I come from, that we have all different kinds of people out there, and school's not for everybody, and there's lots of different circumstances and different cases, and, you know, I always know, um, the reason behind stuff, but I, I would like to make this as, as flexible as possible with the, um, the kids being to participate in, um, NSAA activities if they're here for, for half the day, I think. But I, I would like to make this as flexible as possible with the kids being to participate in NSA activities if they're here for perhaps a day, I think. The reasons for choosing not to be here vary widely, and I just, I just feel that it's... It's, I, I'm personally, I think I would like to see them be able to participate, go here half of the day.
Again, I remember my part, my present kids and my older kids, they would rather been in school than at home doing something. You know?
Yeah.
You know, so it would be at home at work and it's not home, and you consider that to be homeschooling?
Well. It depends upon the time that they do the schooling. They may do work during the day.
They're released for kids that are seniors and things like that, where they went home for a couple hours.
We haven't done a good job of that. I mean, some of them, I said, because, you know, and I said, you know, we should make this, they should have to take a test for what they're learning on that farm. I, I should require them, I should have been more restrictive, saying, you know, you gotta work, if you're gonna be here, if you're gonna be here at these times. And by and large, they've been good about it, but I mean, really, if we're looking at an education level, then yes, they should, you know, they should, they should have some accountability. And we haven't always done that very well.
You've done a lot of work-study.
Work-study, and if this thing expanded, I mean, I don't see it expanding that far myself, but if it did, they should have some sort of accountability. I mean, the kids we've done studies with the colleges, they've all had to have accountability. I mean, if they're, if they're doing an independent study in our farm, they have an instructor that says you will do this and this and this, and that's, you have to report on what you're gonna accomplish. And the closest we've come is with the FFA, with the SAEs and things like that, where those kids have had, you know, they have, through the SAE, had to fill out that they learned to do these things in a, whether it's just...
So there was an instructor law?
Yes.
So it's not really homeschooling?
No, I, you know, I'm just, yeah.
Well, there is instructional law in homeschooling, too.
Would we encourage more homeschooling? When we're looking at consolidating or merging or whatever you wanna call the word, and talk about dwindling numbers, if a kid decides he just wants to go do a forklift thing so he can come do the forklift class and that's it? I think that's kind of a double-ish thing.
I mean, you're posing some questions, but the reality is, there's a shortage of, we already talked about that earlier. I mean, there's, the system really doesn't educate for a lot of the things that we have for them to do out there. But when you, when you talk about the merger deal, if you don't do it, I think you're gonna have more homeschooling no matter what because the internet allows you to educate wherever, I mean.
If our kids have to pass certain classes to be eligible, I think we have to have some knowledge. If we don't know whether they're passing their classes at home or not, flunking them all. I think we need to have them here for say four classes anyway, and they have to be passing, like you said, three of them, so we know that they're doing something.
We will require at least four classes to be in the extracurricular activities. They can't come and attend the class.
You just told me that they could attend one class.
Well, that, that would be like to be, okay, participating like a concert, I'm sorry, not an NSA activity.
So they could just come and, yeah, and take band and that's it?
Yeah, they could, they could.
But they'd be no competitive.
Yeah, we're gonna require at least four classes is what.
To be in, to be in a competitive.
To be in a competitive activity.
And Bob's saying that's, you know, that's, they should be here for all the classes. And I, there's part of me says the same thing, except I'm, you know, I don't know.
Well, part of the thing is that we're, we're educational area, and we require control of the kids in everything that we do. And yet, in this situation, we don't have control. We don't know what their level of learning is. We don't know that the parent's doing what they're supposed to do. They have guidelines that they get from the state. And so when we get all done.
It's not our responsibility. They're not getting a degree from us.
Well, it is because we have half the education.
Well, we're responsible for our half, that's.
Well, I don't agree with it.
I see your point, Bob. Don't get me to hear.
No, I, I understand.
Everything we do, we send the kids off these things, and we had to think about how we were gonna control them for that or not.
Jeremy, you have something?
I know, like, let me get one out. I don't, Mr. Alt, we'll talk about it. They, they require four classes in the school, and then they require one of your homeschool classes. You have to provide like a syllabus of the class and a grade structure and assist in how the kid is graded in that class, and if they are passing or failing in that class. That's how they allow kids to do extracurricular there. So they require you to show one of your homeschool classes along with four classes from in the school. So that kinda covers what you're talking about as some accountability at home.
That keeps the parents involved with the school.
They have to, I mean, I have to send it to the state, when I'm gonna teach what the classes are, and the state has to approve that before I can even do that curriculum at home. It's no different than here. You have to get it approved to teach it. So what's being taught at home is an approved curriculum due to state. And O'Neill requires you to provide that to them and the grades of that student for one of those classes. So, you know, if you require them to pass four classes in your school and one from home, they're required to pass five classes, and I don't know what the requirements are here. Even when you're talking about, you can, whatever, you have to miss games for several weeks, but that's just an option. That's something O'Neill did to further it than just the four in-school classes.
I think that, I mean, that would address what you're saying, Mike. It's not gonna address what Bob's saying, but.
Doug, did you have something you wanted to say?
These kids don't have to meet the same requirements that everybody else. I think the extracurricular part is the fun stuff.
But there's some kids out there that learn more through teams, team, whatever, than they do.
But they don't have to pay the dues to do it. They can come in and only go ahead.
It might still be giving that kid something that gets him through life or allows him to do something.
Absolutely, so go to school here if you want that.
He might not have the choice.
Well, the parents have to ultimately have the choice anytime. I just don't agree with it.
Doug, did you have something?
Yes. Couple things. If you did the four class or the five class, like Mr. Hampton suggested O'Neill does, you probably aren't a long ways off from what the norm is in this school. Because there's a couple of classes that each student takes that really doesn't amount to anything anyhow. That's one comment. The other thing I heard Mr. Alt say earlier, and I'd like a little clarification, maybe the board would, I don't know, maybe that he explained good enough. When he said no diploma, I didn't quite understand that.
Part-time enrolled student would not receive a diploma because they have not completed all of the district requirements. They would not have a record of credits, maybe enough credits in math, enough credits in social studies, whatever it is. We don't know, when a student is homeschooled, we don't know necessarily what they have completed curriculum-wise. And even though they have to submit a curriculum to the State Department, there is no, I wanna say, no transfer of that, what has been taught, what, what degree they have learned at, the school really doesn't know anything about that.
I think that, you know, if the child just took a diploma, it just wouldn't be for like, oh, the schools that come from the state. We would send our records to the state, right?
They don't, I don't think, they even ask for records to go there. I honestly don't know what they do for, for that.
Your trans, I mean, you would obviously keep the grades here, and so your child, when they go to college, they would request a transcript of what they had at your school.
What they took here, yeah.
What they took here, and then the rest of the transcript would be whatever they took at home.
But would they have a diploma?
They would get a GED is what would happen. They don't get a, they don't get a diploma from a school. Unless you transfer your kids into a parochial school that honors what you've done at home, then you can get a diploma from that parochial school if they have a, you know, if they have a high school.
That brings up another question for me, then. What if they take the four classes that would allow them to pass whatever requirements you guys got to get a diploma then?
They'd have to be here more than they.
They would have, they have to meet, in order to get a diploma from Plainview Public School, you have gotta meet the, the requirement set forth by the board. Basically, you gotta earn, what was it, last month, two-hundred-and-sixty-five credits, I think it was, and they gotta be broken about, broken apart in different areas. You've gotta meet those requirements.
So they have to take extra years of high school to do it? They could.
In theory, you could.
But could you do that in four classes or not? I don't know.
You'd have to attend full-time.
Not four classes, part of four years, no.
Three and a half years, I think you could.
Might be close now.
Yeah, it's real close. The girl, I mean, it's happened, I don't know, I can't think of anybody here lately. I mean, I know Creighton just graduated that one in three years up there.
But I think they also took, you know, classes online.
Online, yeah.
Yeah, so they allowed the online classes or whatever to, which meant the school's requirement for accreditation is the wish.
Yeah.
As far as Plainview, it's been a lot of years since, but we've had kids graduate in three, three and a half.
Good job.
I would just make this comment, not, not about homeschoolers, but kids who leave to go do work-study. I had more problems with kids who were in choir that loved to do work-study, getting back for my concerts, and not even worrying about the district music NSA part of it. I had more problems with them getting back because they were on work-study and it conflicted with concert dates.
Right now, we really have to talk about work-study, aren't we? We're just talking about.
I opened it up just to the fact that.
But that's not what we're reporting on.
No, no, we're, virtually it comes down to, we're saying at least four classes, Bob says, role full-time. Mike, you brought up the point that, and I, that would be, I would go along with that, that they do have at least one accredited, the homeschool. So, and you said O'Neill set that up, Jeremy, or?
Yeah, I talked to their guidance counselor and that's kind of the way they go.
So I, I would suggest at least that, too.
So then we probably need to.
This is just discussion.
Yeah, then just first reading.
Well, we could, I could make a, then a, a, a motion to amend this thing to say that I wanna change the extracurricular activities, say that you have to be a full-time student to be an extracurricular activity. Could I make a motion like that to amend this, or do we, or can we vote on that?
I guess you could make a motion to approve policy with that change.
Okay.
If you wanna do that.
Okay.
If that is passed.
Well, we're not gonna approve the policy per se, it's not.
Well, it'd be first read.
First read.
Now, you could, now, next month, you could come in and you could make, you know, changes to it if you.
I would make a motion that we approve what's, full-time, part-time enrollment, first reading with the change that extracurricular activities, the student has to be here full-time to participate. Chris, I have one more comment if I may.
Then we got a motion, we got to decide if we're gonna get a second or not. If we don't get a second, it's dead. Yeah.
Okay, hearing no second. Anybody else wanna try an amendment or something?
I would to approve the policy with the change that they need to show at least one homeschool curriculum and grades, minimum requirements for that class. I keep everything as it is and add that on.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept on first reading or policy with the change as Ford mentioned.
No, just our discussion, I mean, I'd like to see that policy how it's written, I guess, I mean, obviously.
We would do it with, with that recommend change as a first reading, and there'll be a second reading before it becomes official, so if you wanted to, you'd have a reading. And if I get it written, I can send a copy to you.
Okay.
You know, so I'll get it done.
Well, can we make that be, I mean, is it, I don't know how it's set up, if they can just do PE at home and that's the subject they pick, can we determine it to be a core class?
Well, I'd like to follow the question. Call the question. Let's go.
Thought we were in discussion.
No, it's been moved and seconded.
Okay, moving second. Roll call. Vicki?
Yes.
Bob?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, no. Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
I will try to make those changes and then it will be a second reading.
Moving on, discuss approval, per surety, changes to board policy, three oh two, point oh two, superintendent contract.
The, this, the rest of these policies in this, this section, suggested policies or changes to policies that the NASB made. I'm gonna go through and talk about each of them. The idea was to make one motion, unless there's something that you wanna change in each one. I'd make it a little bit quicker rather than back to each one of them separately. And that's fine. We can do that if you want to. The first one of these, the superintendent contract, this is the resolve of the Superintendent Transparency Act, was passed by the legislature this year. What it does, it kinda sets the criteria that must be done by the board when hiring the superintendent or renewing their, their contract. Part of that is, before you can act on superintendent's contract, it has to be posted. I think it's at least three days before the board votes on it, so as I indicated in my notice, it's gonna complicate the issue a little bit, it'll take negotiations time. Cause you're basically gonna have to negotiate, probably at a meeting, then wait till the next meeting to really act, you know, act on, so slow the process down, so it's probably gonna prove a little bit. The act also stipulates that the information has to be posted on the district website. My information is currently posted on the website under the administrative, on the administrative page, so I posted the contract, and then I posted a, a part of there's kind of a spreadsheet that puts together and shows, you know, what my salary is, what my benefits are, how much the district is paying for accumulation of retirement, social security and all of that. So, and then a bottom line, what does my contract cost the Board of Education? That's part of what's gonna happen to that, so.
I would like to see that added to be put, and we talked about this earlier, I mean, about how some people don't have access to the web, and some people have access to the local paper. I'd like to see that put in there somewhere, that it would be published in our local paper also, and not just that it's a requirement. So, for transparency reasons, my opinion.
Does it get put in the management's access?
This hour is published now.
Still the data is public.
Not the newspaper, after the fact. This is before the fact.
We have put it in the minutes of the meeting before it's.
I'm pretty sure it's not listed otherwise anyway.
Well, if we had.
The number, the number and the details are never listed.
Not the details. Usually just the base.
The total.
It's usually a percentage of increase, although the base isn't actually listed.
So, that would just, I would just like to see that little change. I mean, we'd have plenty of time if we're going to act on it one meeting, vote on it, but the next meeting, we'd have a whole month in there to put it in the minutes or.
The board shall publish a copy of the contract.
It just says electronic publication on the website, the district shall satisfy this publication requirement.
I got you. That's what you're saying is.
Well, Alden said it earlier, not everybody does the website.
But it's published in the minutes, I, I.
Brooke is right. I think sometimes it is just the percentage increase that's, I, I.
It's usually, it's usually the terms.
It's also usually published as a list of sellers, sellers with the entire staff.
We haven't run, we haven't run that in years. I don't think that's required anymore.
No, it's not required, but you've asked for it.
Right.
Yeah, we used to run it all the time, the entire staff. But you're right, you haven't run it for.
It's just a percentage. It's just a percentage.
What's in the minutes? Well, what I would, what's written up here is what, you know, the NASB basically put together. This, this satisfies the Superintendent Transparency Act, so that's.
Which was passed this year in the legislature, so, quite honestly, comes from.
So, but we can still change it, correct? Not that.
No.
Right.
No.
As long as it.
Right.
So you just wanna add a sentence that says, um, the proposed contract will be published in the local newspaper.
Yes.
Prior to the vote.
On the website and.
And publication in local newspapers.
Yes.
So is that with the, the paragraph following electronic publication, is that where you're looking, and you want it handed in the newspaper?
So electronic publication on the website and the publication. It must be promptly disparaged. Is that right?
You can't put in there that it will satisfy the requirement because it doesn't need to be satisfied.
We're thinking about it a little backwards. It says, it will be published, that infers it's in the newspaper, but the website will do, if that's what you wanna do.
Well, there's a sentence in there, so electronic publication shall satisfy the publication.
Right, the, the electronic publication isn't out, if you don't wanna put it.
You don't have to do that.
You could put it on the website if you felt like it, but the implied meaning, the press association didn't jump on this, so they're implying that the newspaper is the place that you would publish it.
Probably not every district has a local newspaper like, do they?
Sure they do. Something.
Of some sort.
Some kind, yeah. We're not that bad, then.
I, yeah, I, I didn't know.
So no, we really don't have to change it, we just gotta put it in the paper. Cause it already says that the public, or that the electronic would satisfy, but it doesn't say that that's the way you have to do it. It just says if you don't wanna put it in the paper, you can do it to do what's.
She's saying she wants it to be.
Right, because they, I mean, down the road someplace, they could say, well, I just put it on the website and that met the obligation. Cause it doesn't say what form of publication or whatever.
Paper's on the website.
It's not in the paper. Wait.
If you have the website twice.
Okay, so you want that changed, made for that policy?
I, I would like to see.
Well, I think we still do a first reading and with that one, at the time with the recommended change.
Yeah.
Okay. The next one on the certificated employee qualifications, the biggest change in this one was to, uh, the legislature made a change this year that when you are hiring for a position, even no longer is one of your preliminary questions, or even on the application, ask a potential employee if they have a criminal record. Uh, you have to wait until you're through that first initial round of your application process before you can ask that. So that's, that's what this change in this policy basically does. Now, that, that does not include for asking about, uh, sex offenders, or being a sex offender, or being a child, you can still ask about that. If you want to, uh, just a criminal record, if you've been picked up for shoplifting or something, you couldn't ask about anything like that. So, anything with that one, if I can see.
So you could bring back five people for a second session, you could bring back five people for a second meeting, find out they've all murdered somebody.
But they have to meet the, they have to meet, as soon as they meet the minimum requirements, then you can do it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. The next policy on the support staff qualification, it's really the same, uh, same thing, the same reasoning in that. Again, you know, the same thing to that, so if we're gonna hire a parent, same type of thing applied to that. Board policy five oh four point two three on suicide awareness. This is a new policy, uh, the legislature, passed legislation which now, now requires that each school will provide at least one hour of training for, uh, staff that will include nurses, teachers, counselors, uh, says their school psychologists, administrators, social workers, and appropriate personnel. That will need to be done each year. We are hoping to work with the service unit on that, whether they're gonna provide some type of, uh, video, you know, that we can sit down and watch. Much like to do with the asbestos training or something like that, but that is a new requirement this year. Okay, the, uh, five oh eight point oh five on the emergency plan and drills. We did not have a, a policy written before, although this covers a lot of the same things that we were doing. This policy was really brought about by the fact that now, or the legislature's later have to hold at least two tornado drills each year. So that was kind of the impetus to start, or, you know, the, for the policy to be written, so then they, they covered, this covers the, you know, fire drills and those types of things also, which we've already been doing, it was not necessarily a policy to cover that. And then five oh three point oh four, there's, there's really a lot of changes of, to the, the policy, of wording changes. The, the main essence of this policy is the legislature wanted to rewrite the, the laws to change the, kinda the intent. And again, this, this was changed, I don't know, two or three years ago, where they really put more pressure on parents to get their children to school. The school district had, you know, was required to notify attorneys, um, get them involved in the process and that type of thing, to put some pressure on parents, and the children to be in school. I'm not sure what the reason for the change was, but with this, this new policy, what they're, they're doing is they're, they're putting more of an impetus on, working with the student, working with the parents, uh, looking at alternatives, you can do, whatever you can do to get that child back in school. Uh, you can still go through the process, you use an attorney and that type of thing, but it just kinda changes the focus of what, uh, we're supposed to be, or what the school needs to do. You know, more counseling and those types of things be involved in. Anything on any of those questions?
I think a motion to approve on first reading, board policy five oh two point one five, policy three oh two point oh two, four oh six point oh two, four twelve point oh two, four, five oh four point two three, five oh eight point oh five, five oh three point oh four.
Okay, Bob, with that, now with that full and part-time role, there was a change, right?
With the amendment, with the change on, five oh two point one, is that right?
Three oh two point oh two.
Three oh two.
Five oh two point one five and three oh, and three oh two.
Right, first two, okay.
And with the recommended change or something, right, I wanna tell you.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved in second, roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
yourself, yes. Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Next group of policies, first and second reading.
All right, as indicated there, these policies will require being brought back, cause there's kinda some, uh, not, not as significant a change as the wording, I think, just some, some minor things in each of these. Uh, the first one of these, uh, we talked a little bit about this one last month, this, it's, uh, five oh six point oh one on the student activity eligibility. Really, the only change in this one was about the middle of the page on that, one that talks about the NSAA. The wording was changed, uh, from any student not passing a minimum fifteen credit hours, it's changed to any student, I believe it's, uh, not passing two classes shall be ineligible. That'll be kind of more consistent with what we've been doing, so that's the only change there. Questions on that?
Why does it start on Tuesday and go through Monday instead of just through the week?
Reason with that, by the time you get the, get it reported, uh, at the end of the week, and get their, you know, their grades figured, where, where they're at academically.
And it usually comes in on Friday after noon, so I have to carry out time, I need to get it ready.
Okay, the, the next one on the, uh, activity regulations. The only change on this one was really in the very first, uh, thing under student participation, uh, change it. I think it said a student must have been in class attendance for at least the last half of the school day. Change it to basically say at least one half of the school day, and the reason for that was, you know, sometimes we have a student, you know, a doctor's appointment, a dentist appointment, something like that, trying to be a little more flexible. It's kinda what we've been doing, to try to be fair to the, fair to the students, uh, just gonna bring the policy in line with that.
But if they go home sick.
They go home sick, but they would not be allowed.
Yes.
They don't. Okay, any other questions on that?
I noticed in the student handbook, they were adding e-cigarettes, do we need to add that on here? With this list of controlled substance, alcohol, beverages, tobacco?
I think, you know, I thought about that, Chris, on that, I think it, the policy will put the tobacco, that puts e-cigarettes under the tobacco form of tobacco, I think we're still okay with that. Okay, on the, uh, let's see, what's left, the guidelines, the next one. Now, this one, change was made to, I think it's item number, on the requirements, item number four. It had said the student athletes must maintain a minimum academic load of six classes, as all other students. Would add with this, an exception to this requirement may be made for students or exempt students, so that was put in there because of the full and part-time role. So, uh, that would still be consistent with what we discussed with that change in the policy, wouldn't it?
Cause that's already covered in the files.
Yeah. So that was the only change in that. Uh, the concussion awareness. Concussion awareness one. No, weapons was next, excuse me. We did have a policy on weapons. Basically, what they did on this was, uh, there were, some changes in who could have a weapon. Well, I, I guess, two, two big changes. First of all, the wording from a student shall be expelled, to a student may be expelled. Prior to this, i- if a student brought a weapon to school, even, even by accident, uh, you had to, by law, expel them. Now, you could go in and you could kinda redo that, but you had to expel them. So this change is that, which I think is a better, a better approach to it, this says you may expel them. And so even look at the situation, you know, how severe you thought it was, you know, a student, you know, had a, more often than not, what happens, maybe a student has a knife in their pocket, you know, they, they're hunting, they have it in their jacket or something, and all of a sudden, it falls out of the pocket on the floor in front of the teacher. Or worse than that, in front of the principal or superintendent, you know, you gotta expel them for that, and let you know that it wasn't there for a purpose, but, you know, before, you basically had to expel them. So this one gives you some, uh, latitude with that, you can work with.
I always had questions about, well, we had that policy, and I'd go, and I was planning on going, huh, and I didn't even think about it, I had my gun in the backseat of my car, on the shelves back there, and I had, I had a lock on going. And then I came out at noon, and I said, wow, could I just break this policy? Well, that sparked on the street, cause I consider it school property.
Yeah, you could probably get into an argument, there probably, technically, probably, but the school parking lot would be there.
Well, we don't have a school parking lot. Well, maybe over behind the elementary, my.
But this says, says it, if it's, you know, locked, I was reading this, you know, locked gun rack.
But that, that also is operated by a non-student adult, just part of that.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
I mean, cause it's legal for kids to carry a loaded gun in, in the, in the gun rack, a rifle, correct?
I don't know if it is anymore.
You could carry a rifle, though, you couldn't carry a shotgun. Is that right?
And the rifle, I mean, you shouldn't have one in the tube, but, yeah, the shotgun, you can't have any in it at all. The rifle, the magazine, you can have the magazine full, the bolts ahead, without one in the chamber.
You, you can't have one in the chamber.
You shouldn't.
You should.
Legally.
Now, now, is that the state-controlled version of having a, a weapon, or is that for a student?
You mean, is it law, or is it, um, the shotgun or the rifle?
Rifle.
Um, let me get you the statute. But I, I've also thought about what you said, as far as being parked outside on the street, you know, is that considered parking lot? Cause you do have kids that hunt, you know, or, or ammo, I mean, ammo, you know, you look at how that.
Everybody's got a couple shells rolling around inside their weapon compartment.
I really think, according to this word, it says students bringing firearms to school or knowingly possessing firearms in school may be expelled for a period of not less than one year. That doesn't talk about it being loaded, having shells in it or not, that's just having a firearm.
Right.
Right.
Uh, we were just talking, checking this out.
This would be non-students you're talking about here.
Oh, that's a non-student.
Well, if you read on, firearms kept in a locked firearm, because on a motor vehicle, uh, are contained within a private vehicle operated by a non-student adult that are not loaded, are also exempt. Just talking about some exempt situations, you know, Jeremy, as a police officer, could walk into the building with his gun.
If it's, if you can see it.
Yeah.
But even as law enforcement, I'm, I can't carry it into the school concealed.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, the way this was written before, I think we had a discussion not too long ago, you know, Mr. Command wanted to do an archery class. You know, we talked about that situation as, as a weapon, you know, uh, because of, of this policy or this law. Uh, and this is trying to give, I think, a little more latitude like that, cause it says, you know, used in an under education program, you could, you would have some latitude. I think it's, I think this is a better scenario, what they're trying to do with it.
Time coming on that.
John, go ahead.
I think you could use the example that, uh, like me, I'm frightened, huh? But I know Kid Gordon did the same thing. Uh, got expelled. He used to wear it all the time, he's a cowboy. He knew what's supposed to do it. His mom was a teacher, walked into school, they saw it, expelled him.
So they had no latitude, according to law, what they were supposed to do. Hurry away with it. This gives you a little bit of latitude.
By changing the work to many.
You know, when I, when I was a principal of Hildreth, I, I'd be with my kids every year when hunting season started, and I'd say, please understand, you know, leave your guns at home. And it wasn't that you didn't trust kids or anything, you were just reminding them, so they didn't get, get in a predicament, put you in a predicament, cause that was the last thing I wanted to do, was deal with that situation.
Everybody used to carry, well, everybody, yeah, from second grade on, you used to, playing your sandhells and all kinds of things, but not anymore.
Well, there's probably a lot of knives at school that you left in pockets, so, you know, we still don't know, but anyhow, that's, that's that change. Okay, the concussion awareness, uh, the only, or the change in this one was, uh, what they, they wanted to do was establish a return to learn protocol. Before, it was just, you know, they'd be aware of the concussion and that type of thing, but now, uh, make sure that the, the schools are aware, if students had a concussion, that you are kinda paying attention to them. You can't really maybe expect them to do as much in the classroom every day, you may have to look at some, you know, changes for them until they're, you know, over that concussion. Allows us to maybe, you know, to do that a little bit better. And I think that's probably another good change. And then the tobacco-free policy, uh, this one, the, the change on that was to include, uh, e-cigarettes as a, as a tobacco product. And I, I will admit on this one, I was, um, last time I was on an airplane. A young man across the aisle in one seat up from me was puffing on a cigarette, and I think, what in the world was he doing? And then I looked a little closer, and he was, was in one of those e-cigarettes, you know. I, I just stopped to think about, is that really legal, or is that not legal? I think for what we're trying to portray for students. I think for what we're trying to portray for students, any type of thing like that should probably not be allowed.
I honestly don't think Janice Sidero said.
It must have been made, I think, like around a couple years. Get your start of the year.
Okay, unless you've got questions. Don't think any of those are suggested changes.
I need to change a motion. I'll make a motion to approve on first and second reading. For policy five oh six oh one, five oh six oh one R one, R two, five oh four eleven, five oh eight fifteen, and one thousand six oh two.
No second.
It's been moved in second and roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Approve proposed provisions to the district safety plan. Mr. Frederick.
Most of them aren't too earth shattering this year. Moved Kim Harold, she's no longer part of the staff and they moved, so I took her off. Updated phone numbers. With Jen Hotson coming to the high school, are going to be over here full time rather than in the elementary. I just did some changes on the incident command and the medical emergencies, on the response teams. The biggest one was probably the severe weather. In the elementary, Mr. Alt and I discussed it a number of times. We have always, probably since the building was built, evacuated students to the hallways. They did the duck and cover method. But if you look at it, both ends are, every end of that, on every wing is all glass, so you have a wind tunnel effect. Our enrollment is at a point where we believe we can evacuate students to the bathrooms and, and my office, which would be interior, no windows. So I had to update the plan that gets hung up. That was the pink sheet in that packet. And I think it was a pink one, huh? Pink sheet in your packet. And then it just requires a little bit of a wording change, which I'll go through and I'll have to redo the foot charts for the classrooms. That's not a big thing. And then just updated evacuation, basically contact people and brief management agencies and people that we have in the area. I hope we never do, but if we would ever need brief management because of a situation.
When you do your fire drills and tornado drills, do you do them at different times of the day each time? So they kind of get to you and know which exits they should be using or which bathrooms they should go to those rooms?
And this year with the change with the tornado, because you've always done just one tornado drill forever. I think forever. We've always done it during your weather week. We'll still do one during that time, but Mr. Alt and I discussed it of doing one before Labor Day this year. Just because it seems like we have so many fall tornadoes anymore.
After that one, and Wayne last year, I was what, like, in Denver, not going to Denver. You know, we'll do one in the fall and one in the spring.
Do you normally have ten fire drills a year?
One a month, usually is what they tried to.
But sometimes it's three. Well, sometimes they, they block, you block exits so that if we don't.
Yeah, we do an alternative fire drill.
Right, so that there's, we know that there are other ways to get out of the building.
Plus the alarm gets pulled more than that.
The thing on changing the, where the students go, I saw a video, that might have been last year. I don't know when, what was the video of, from Jop, Missouri, when that tornado went through, they had cameras in the school. And they showed the video of that. You could see the debris going down the hallway in that school. You know, glass, dust flying down there. And I, if there's a way to get the students out of the hallway, we need to do it because, you know, that, that, something would happen. They're not getting safe.
It's a terrible, terrible function.
Yeah.
Yeah, the example, our problem, just the air that comes down this hall here. Once you open that door, we never thought we'd be freezing everything. It sits down there, but it's, the pressure of the building just allows, that's the release and it just goes.
I mean, this will be a big change. We'll meet with the teachers at the beginning of the year and probably have a little discussion with the students because especially elementary, boys aren't supposed to go to the girls bathroom. Girls aren't supposed to go to the boys. But in a situation, I mean, it's just going to take a little education and patience the first couple of times.
Might seem mature, I'm just trying to know what to expect.
Ready for motion, Al.
Sure. Is that it? So change, I know you should probably have to make a change in your editorial staff.
What's that?
You have to make a change in your editorial staff.
I know, everything always changes after. I get everything set.
I'll move we approve of the proposed provisions to the district's safety plan as presented.
I'll send it out. It's been moved in second and roll call. Vicki?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Corey.
Thanks, thank you for your work.
Corey puts a lot of time in this, he takes it very serious. Appreciate all the work you do. Okay, next item is discuss act on school improvement options of advanced ed or Nebraska frameworks.
No.
Oh, federal program director.
Yep. I'll move to designate Richard Long as the state federal program director for two thousand fourteen fifteen school year.
No second.
It's been moved in second and roll call. Vicki?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, now discuss the next school improvement.
It's refreshing to have a shortage of height. Okay, I would talk a little bit about the advanced ed, the Nebraska frameworks last month. I sent that information to you. It didn't really, I mean, it didn't really give you the pros and cons of each one, but at least there's some information on it. Really, the two, the two processes are very similar in nature. You do basically the same thing in both. You have to gather data and you do that through test results, you know, surveys that are done, different ways you gather data. That data is analyzed and then you have to create, you know, you identify, from that you'll get strengths and weaknesses. But you're looking for areas, you know, maybe that are your weekend, let's say it's reading scores. If you identify it as your reading is a weakness, then you would identify that as a goal that you want to improve upon. So that becomes your student improvement goal. And then you come up with methods, hopefully scientifically researched methods, proven ways to help improve in an area, you know, that area of reading, whatever it is. And then you, you know, you implement the programs or those changes, whatever it is. And then after a period of time, you gather, or you, you look at data again, test results, whatever, and see if you met that goal. So both processes are really the same in that aspect. Now, what differs to me is the degree of documentation you have to go through with advanced ed. They require a lot more documentation. They have what's programs called assists now. We just got into the final part of that where we just had to fill in some information on it, on this last go around. On the new part, you have to put in, all of your documentation has to go into this. Put into the computer, you know, we have ours online on our website, most of it the way it is, but we'll have to transfer it into that. I, I think that's a big difference in it. Frameworks, you have a group that come out, one day evaluation. Where advanced ed, they come out, do a two to three day evaluation. Also advanced ed, if we're going to stay with advanced ed, I think we really need to include the elementary in it. Right now, our advanced ed certification is just in high school. But if you stop and think about school improvement, especially at a school our size, if you're going to do things to improve an area of weakness such as reading, where are you going to have the most effect? It's going to be at the elementary level. And, and we've been doing that. A lot of our things we've done is at the elementary level. And we've had a few things at the high school. But to be honest about it, when you get the kids when they're sophomores and juniors, you're not going to make big changes. So you need to get to it at an earlier level. So like I said, if we're going to stay with advanced ed, which was fine, I think we need to expand it to include the elementary. Whereas with the frameworks, you can do a more of a K twelve school improvement process and it's all blended in together. The advanced ed, I think it's like seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then the money part is not a big deal. I assume if you do the elementary, it's going to be another seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I don't look at that as a, as a big deal. It's more the time, the time consumption that you have to put into meeting specific requirements when you're going to really accomplish the same thing.
So I was going to ask you, do you feel like this makes you do a better job or you just got to document what you're already doing?
I really don't know if you end up doing a better job, you spend more time documenting.
But you could be spending the same job. Yeah.
You know, I, I've been told, and then I, I can't speak to this specifically. I've been told really the one and only benefits of advanced ed is if you have a student that graduates from your school and they go to the East Coast, they're going to get accepted into the university or college on the East Coast because your school is advanced ed. And that, how many students do we have go to the East Coast schools, you know, that type of thing. So I talked to the staff at two different times about this, asked for input. And to be honest with you, I did not get any input on it, either one way or the other. Basically, the comment was whatever you think best. So my recommendation at this time is going to be to go with the frameworks. I'm okay with, with either one of them, but that would be my recommendation.
So no, please, it's a framework, it's a framework. I'm making a motion to adapt the Nebraska framework. To make school improvement a model for the next school improvement cycle.
Okay, it's been moved in second and roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Myself, yes, sorry. Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Vicki?
Yes.
Now, we're going to review and approve the handbook changes for the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year.
Put this together, change it. And I want to make sure you understand that there would be some minor changes like staff members, that type of thing that aren't here, you know. It would go in, but these are real things to change. wording may change the meeting or agenda or something. So first thing on the vehicles and parking, the change in, in that was you change the wording. I don't, I guess I didn't run off what it said before, but to, to read in that section that vehicles are off limits. Once they are parked and students are not allowed to access any vehicle during the school day without permission. Students are not allowed to ride in the vehicles of any person during the school day, which includes while added activities. And this will hopefully clarify the meaning of what we were doing in the past.
So if a kid leaves a book in his car, a high school student, they're over there lunch hour, I don't know how that's handled, if they're supervised, but he runs out, unloads his car, calls in to view his book, and somebody catches him, is he in trouble?
He gets in trouble. But if you ask to go out and give him permission, which happens all the time.
They'll usually stop at the office and say, and I'll just tell them, yes, just check in with me when you come out.
They're told.
Students are not allowed to ride in vehicles of any person during the school day.
I would assume that that would exempt parents if they came to.
If they came to pick them up, take them to doctor, point them at that type of thing.
Better.
They're signed, get yours to sign out by their permission.
That would be a permission.
Yeah, that would be a permission. But that's going to be approved through the office.
Sure.
They're going to be dismissed. Anything else on that?
Do we need to put that in because there again, the intense intensities there, we know that it means things, but do we need to put that in there?
Without permission, then they will have permission. I mean, if they left, if there's an off permission, they would be in trouble.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah. I look at the without permission covers that.
Krista, if I may.
Sure.
A couple comments. Number one, we talked about the weapons deal. And it said you guys want to change that from will to may. How do you still have? Discipline will be whatever the principal decides will be. Just violated. The next comment is supposedly this was all known before or later, but now we're going to write. The reason I bring that up is during my student appeals process, the current principal, this is what Vicki said. Those students knew they weren't supposed to do that because they were told. And the reason I know that they were told, I know that they understood. It's on the CD that Mr. Alt brought. She said, I interviewed those three girls all at the same time. Mr. Command was outside of my office, my door was open this way. And I asked the students if they knew they weren't supposed to drive. And one of them said yes. And Mr. Command heard it, but he didn't know what's wrong.
Do you have a comment on how we're going to approve this or?
I asked the question.
Okay, do you have something that would have re-results that can talk specifically about this? Do you have some suggestions that we change? Otherwise, you're just editorializing if we did that before.
When did you do it?
You had that chant before, correct?
In your five minutes.
In your five minutes. If you have, if you have something to improve this, go ahead and say it. If you don't have something to improve this, then I don't want to hear it.
Okay, then don't hear it. Shut your ears and leave.
No, you don't have the right to speak unless we give you the right to speak. And you had that originally at the beginning. No. It's not, you can talk about this, but you can't editorialize.
Okay. I asked the question.
Anything else on that?
The only thing I can add to that, I shouldn't get involved in, but we have to leave it up to them because you can't make a rule for every situation. It just can't happen. You have a book, and it's that, and it ain't going to happen. That's why we hire these people. That's what they're here to do and that's, we're behind and for it, that's why we do it. If you want to make a book that's from here to the top of the water tower, every situation that could possibly happen, start writing. But it ain't going to happen here. Because you never get them all. That's all I had to say.
In the next section on the attendance, this part is really on, pertains to the part of the handbook. For absences that will be considered for a student if they're going to have to semester test. It isn't on how many absences you have in the part of the absence section, but on the semester testing. The change in this is making six, excuse, absences per class per semester.
What was it before? That doesn't matter.
I don't, I don't try to think of five.
That's why I think it was four.
I don't know for sure.
I thought maybe it was three. Yeah, I don't think it was very many. So that's a pretty big.
So does it say semester test?
Well, that's, this section would come out and taken out of that section of the handbook. The next part of that, exempt from the absent count would be medically verified, illness that extended past three days, or any ongoing condition lasting more than three days. Orthodontist, physical therapy for the same condition set. You have a student that is, you know, they have to go to physical therapy, you know, once a week or something like that, and that abs, or you got a student with braces, you probably got to go in and get them cranked on a little bit or that type of thing to. get them cranked on a little bit or that type of thing to, a little bit of latitude with that. Section five, students of grade seven through twelve, they only have two classes in a week rating. That was being consistent with what we talked about earlier with the policy as far as eligibility.
So is that for the junior high too, as far as practices?
They have to, they have to. On the second page, on the, and this combined a couple of things, the energy and muscle building drinks. I think we had energy drinks in there before. Mr. Vicki really wanted to add this. We found some things in locker room after the school year were over. Some, you know, you can buy a lot of things at GNC and that type of thing. And I'm not, I'm not saying they're necessarily illegal. I'm just not sure that it's things that we as a school should be promoting. I'm still allowing that in school. So she wanted some wording in here, change that. So students are not allowed to possess or consume any form of energy drinks or muscle building drinks on school property. This includes having shakers, blending bottles in the school. And policy pertains to all buildings, classrooms, locker rooms, and school transportation. Also includes school activities. And then, what's it says the information on that? And I guess I didn't, I didn't put that with this. We had stuff that Mr. Vicki found, and I've got it in my office that just things.
I think they don't have that.
Oh, she did.
I think they don't have that.
I'm sorry. I didn't put it on mine.
Is it their two pages?
Yeah.
So like Gatorade, is that common?
I think those types of things, as far as bringing them in, I think as an energy drink product will be canceled.
Because we use, we sell those.
But if it's, oh, it goes through the pop machine, they buy them. And we'll, we'll have some stuff available that way.
Okay.
But I, I think we're really, I'd be honest with you, Bob, I answered and I need to change them. We're, we're more concerned about bringing in.
These supplement types.
These supplements, yeah.
So what's the penalty for being caught? Just taking it away first time?
Taken away to start with and then.
So if there's something that's borderline, like you said, Gatorade, and the kid thinks it's all right, he's not going to get kicked out first time?
No, not at the start of it. Okay, these next parts, additions and changes to the handbook. Mr. Vicki wasn't sure. She, she, she said the PE teachers like to see this change. Kind of a situation where you've got students continually bringing notes that, you know, exclude Johnny or Sally from PE class for this and for that. And, you know, a single student may end up missing quite a number of times. She, she'd like to see, or the PE teachers would like to see a change where, you know, after two notes from the parents and they need to bring something from the doctor. Probably not a big deal, but.
Well, it's if you're not participating, you may as well not be in class.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
What's fair to.
Still be in another class.
Fair to one student, you know, I have to be dressed every day and participate where another student is bringing a note. And then if there's a legitimate reason, definitely don't have a, have a problem. I mean, we go back to that concussion awareness policy. If you have a student that had a concussion, you don't want them in PE class, you know, where they're going to get bumped or doing things. And so you got to, you know, use some common sense with that also.
So is that two notes per student, per semester, per year, per whatever ailment they're complaining about the time?
I think it'd be per.
Per year class now.
It'd be a year class now, probably. It doesn't say here.
It should be specified a little bit because it's per ailment. They're just going to come up with another ailment.
We can ask for a year. Do that, you know. No, I don't think it'd be per ailment.
Are we going to that?
The next one, Mr. Vicki wanted to kind of address this a little bit. No tank pop.
Please wait.
This includes tank dresses unless they are covered by a jacket or sweater.
Please say it, please say it, please say it, commence.
Running into a little bit of an issue with that. You know, you can't wear a tank pop, but you can wear a dress. It's basically the same thing. And then on the cell phone policy, she'd like to see a change where we would allow, you know, right now, I think the policy says no cell phones at school. And I have kind of a hard time enforcing that. And, and I'll be honest, I've even been a little lenient at a student that, you know, I'll often step into the tart junior high kids there in the quarter and a set up a quarter late in the morning, you see a kid with their cell phone. Now, if you got a cell phone in school at that time, is that considered in school? And I just said, you know, pretty much, you know, I'm not supposed to see that, that type of thing. Now, if it happened after school started, that's, that's a completely different story. But she also wanted to allow them to use it at lunchtime. We know kids have their cell phones. We know that. We can say no cell phones at school, but put on search pockets or anything to see if they're there. She wouldn't allow them to use it during lunchtime. So they would basically have a half an hour there where they, they have a cell phone. And if they were not during their lunch period and using it, they would be subject to, you know, what we've done before, first offense, second offense, third offense, that type of thing.
I have a problem with this one. You knew what that was.
Yeah.
Because I was, I was really didn't want this to happen. I had kids cheating in my class with cell phones. And they, those guys, they could, they could do that.
They're just in their pocket.
In their pocket. Now, just because it's hard to enforce doesn't mean, to me, that's not a reason to get rid of it. When Mr., our last superintendent was here, we had this policy and kids were walking up the hall and I would take it away from him and nothing would happen. And as soon as school was out, you'd see them walking down the hallway with them. I just think we need to enforce the policy and start, start right away with the first, second, third thing. We don't need to have these kids. The only time that they're supposed to be social all day long is to be at noon. And they're going to be sitting there and playing up games on their thing and not being social. I think not having them in school is a good policy and I want to stay with you.
Well, those things, they forget to turn them off or whatever. And they do carry them in their pocket. Well, somebody calls them because they just called somebody at noon hours. They call them back and now they're in class and the phone goes off.
But I mean, just go through the policy. The first time you take it away from them, the second time you start getting discipline problems and tell everybody this is the way it's going to be. Just because it's hard to enforce is not a reason not to do it.
Well, the major reason for cell phones is to communicate with somebody that if you're not around. And there's no reason for that when they're, I mean, I'm, I'm with you all the way. I, I know it's not easy to enforce, but I think it, it can be done and it should be done. I don't think the kids need their phones. Well, when they walk in the door, they don't need them and.
They shouldn't, I'm not supposed to bring them in the school.
I know. I, 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 I'm on your same page. I do not think they should have, you don't need to be calling Uncle Joe at lunch. I don't know who they would call or what they do, but, no, okay, sorry.
No, I, I.
They'll call you later.
No, no, I spoke against it when we said.
We also need to enforce it with teachers. Teachers shouldn't have their cell phones and cell. If they can leave them in their car and if they want to go call somebody, they can go get them out of the, out of the.
Because that's a problem.
Unless there's a specific illness or something like that and they get permission. Because I've seen teachers talking in the hallway and cell phones when they should have been doing other things.
And the kids see that, so.
And then they think, so I would say, I would say that the teachers should have the same policy.
I'm, I'm on the other side of the thing and I was when we put the policy in for this because it's technology. When I want to contact my son or my daughter, I want them to know that they have access to that phone at lunchtime or whenever. And, and it's been employed. As far as the enforcement, I support the enforcement a hundred percent. And I've had my kid several times, the iPod was taken away and we reinforce it. He doesn't, we don't go to the office and let him get it back out of there for another week. If the principal takes it away, we don't go that night and get the iPod back. He loses it for at least three days. And that, I mean, that's the parent reinforcing. Yes, you're not, if they tell you not to use it, don't use it. But we've got a bunch of young teachers and if that phone is a teaching tool for that young teacher in that classroom, I think they should use it. But that's.
You can maybe substance for that. We have iPod, iPad, whatever, places in there, things like that.
Yeah, I, so what do you, I need you, Kevin, I don't need a specific thing, but why do you need them to know something that they can't? You can't send them a text message that they can read and send schools out and not get the same things. They're not going to leave school to go do something during the day anyway that you talked to about.
That's because I got, well, you can leave the text message or whatever, but I'm just saying, if, if I know he's got access to it, maybe I need to know something. Maybe I need him to know, what did you do yesterday at three o'clock to this pig? Well, if he checks it, if he's fortunate enough to have it in his pocket or someplace, I can find out right away. But if he could check it at least at noon, I could know what's going to happen. Maybe I need to know if he has to be at a certain event by a certain time, when do I need to be there to follow up? Sooner he lets me know, I can plan my day accordingly. So again, it's just, it's just me and technology. I mean, we've got a boy right now that doesn't have a phone and it's going to take a little while for it to get his phone back, you know. So as a parent and the teachers, the principals, they have the right to, you, you have the right as a teacher, Bob. You could have, you could have confiscated.
I did, but I got tired of being the only one that was doing it.
Well, you know, so I'm, I'm not going to, you know, but I'm just telling you where I'm at with it. It's, I don't, I don't like it to be pestering either, but as you see, I have mine here. You know, it's, it's, it's just part of my life. I, I, you can watch the debates out of it too, you know. People are supposed to shut them off and not have them in their bedrooms. But when the alarm goes off, somebody's got to be there to answer that alarm because that's, that's life today. So, yeah. But I understand being a teacher in the, because I, I can come from the employer side of it too, of telling, of seeing them on, on, seeing them with the headphones and I'm talking to them, I'm talking to you. And they're, it don't take much of a plug anymore and they've got them in their ears.
It's just a good exchange.
Yeah. But you can scare them pretty good too. Sometimes they don't know you're sneaking up behind them. So, but, so I think the board's going to, yeah, kick it back out. But I, I, I would, I would go along with the way this is written. In fact, I'll repeat, we've got young teachers, you know, if, we could obviously bring the iPads, but if the kid has the access to the phone, he don't have to run and get whatever. If he's got the tool in his hand and needs to use it, let him use it. But again, that teacher would have to, you know, of course, I, I've just said in the classes, you know, you know, obviously Doug could text me right now and say, you know, I, I, I think you're really stupid. You know, well, I could just read it and.
And agree or disagree.
Yeah, agree or disagree.
He just looked and already did.
But I mean, and actually in some of the seminars I sat in, it is, you know, a lot of kids won't respond. You know, they won't say anything. But if they could text that teacher and ask that stupid question that they're afraid to ask because they might think they're stupid, you could teach that kid something. But.
Well, we have, that's, if they can't do that, then that's a communication problem with the kid. Kids, children are always open to let them come up and ask you questions.
Some kids are intimidated by teachers. They are.
But they could text them after class, yeah.
I, I know. Yeah, I know what you're saying. I've.
Well, I'm not right out of class.
I'm not going to be too, either way, I'm not going to be upset about it. But I'm just telling you, in, in my world, I'd, I'd let it happen and I.
The thing is, there's good, a lot of good things you can do by doing it, but it also encourages bad things that are harder to control because you allow them a little bit more rope. And not every kid's going to use them the right way. And then how do you enforce the ones that are?
Well, the principal, that's up to the pr, I mean, she, yeah. I think she's been enforcing it pretty hard. I mean, it, the, the one instance, I mean, it simply vibrated off in his pocket and the kid said, hey, he's got it in his pocket. It was in the principal's office for a week. You know, we, it happened more than once. And we said, how stupid are you? So I, I think she's been enforcing it pretty hard, but if you've got.
I think she's been taken away or taken batteries out and that kind of stuff. But I don't know about going through the system.
She's had, she's had some phones for extended periods of times. I don't know.
Because I mean, like the first time you take it away, the second time you can be suspended or in school suspension. The third one, you could be expelled as the type.
I think there's some specific things on the side. Like the first time you, you got to come in after school and pick it up. The second time, your parents, second time, pick it up. The third time, add it like a week or something. I'm not sure exactly what it is.
And like, again, we were in the parent list and we as parents said, we're not going in there to get it. You know, we, we're tired of this. You shouldn't have had it in there. That was the rule, you know. But, so.
I just have this picture in my mind that as soon as these kids get into the lunchroom, it's just going to be, and that's all it's going to be until the time they leave, you know.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to accept, or reapprove these except for the cell phone.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to approve the changes to the handbook except for the cell phone policy. One second, roll call. Vicki?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yeah, I'm voting no, but it's the cell phone part.
My cell, yes.
She didn't think that was passed anyway.
Thank you.
I'm going to tease her a little bit like Vicki did for a reading here, and just read the paper.
Cat's at a rock.
If we let you know this didn't pass, we can't text.
And we would.
That brings us back to the, what, the example that the teacher should set. Well, you know, can we address that in any manner? This is a student handbook. What do we do with the teacher thing?
But some faculty that, you know, what we try to do with the faculty during the prep period, they, you know, they use them during classes. They are not supposed to be used. And I know we've had some issues with people being out in the hallway. We've tried to address that.
That should never be allowed out of the hallway.
Not under class, not under class now.
I think that if they want to use a cell phone, they should go down to the principal's office, say, is it all right if I use my cell phone and you do it right there and then go back?
But don't they have a lounge? Would they be allowed using the lounge?
They don't have a lounge.
They never go to.
They don't really have a lounge.
A lot of them stay in the rooms during prep time.
Yeah, shut the door.
Maybe we can just tell Patty we would like her to tell them that we think there's too much use by the faculty. And if they don't do something, if they don't improve it, then we'll make a policy.
Okay, I'll put a note here, limit use.
No hallway, no public, you know, gyms or anything.
You know, I'll, I'll be honest. I, I carry my cell phone. I get probably a phone call.
But you're different.
But he talks about, but he talks back in his office.
But you're, you're in a different situation and Patty's in a different situation than me.
I don't, other than answering, you know, if something happened, if I was walking down the hallway getting, get a phone call, answer it. And I just say, please wait. And I go to my office and talk. I'm going to talk down the hallways. Okay, we'll just, we'll bring that up with the staff to, you know, make sure we're a little more aware of what's.
Okay. The next item is city school lunch prices and breakfast prices for 2014-15 school.
Recommending a five cent increase again this year. We operated in red again. I don't know if we'll ever get out of red. We fall within what the, the recommendations from the feds are on it. Just kind of thought that operating in red, we should raise it. We don't, we can't get caught in a situation where we have to raise a lot, you know, a big jump the following year. The other thing we, we looked at a little bit is price of meat and that. We know, you know, some of the things is going to go up. We know that's going to happen. So trying to see, you know, kind of proactive in that regard.
Or we could change the rate at any time.
We could change it anytime in 2014.
Are we falling behind more and more or are we staying kind of consistent like that?
Right now, of course, we have some, some bills yet to pay out of that account. I think there was 10,000 left in there, but the board put 8,000 in this year too. You know, you, you transferred 8,000 from the general fund to the lunch fund, which we've done in the last few years. So we're kind of, you know, we're just, by doing that, we hold our own. Last year, we transferred 12,000, I said, but I think we said that this year was only eight. So.
So did we raise them last year?
Yeah, we did. I don't know if it was a nickel or a dime.
I think we raised 10.
I think we did last year too. I think it was 10 last year, maybe a nickel the year before that. So we've been increasing them. But we run into a situation with the federal recommendations. We had to raise it, you know.
Yes, yeah.
For one or two years in a row, you got to stay in a certain range.
How much of red a dime is a bunch? We could raise this dime if you think we're in the red. Or is that, we're not worried about being in the red in that?
I think there is one dime.
Hopefully meat prices don't go as high as they're going to go.
Do they have an average count of like how many kids don't eat lunch?
I have a report, oh, don't. I have a report every month of the average number of lunches that are served. I don't, of course, this month because I'm working on lunches served. That's in your report.
I don't, of course, this month because I'm working lunches served, that's in your report.
Look at the attendance and no. Next number nine.
It's, when do they take lunch count, cause like, they don't take lunch count?
Anymore.
They do anymore.
So like if twenty-five kids are bringing their lunch, they don't know it, so what do they do with that extra food?
It tends to average out apparently.
I'm surprised.
Well, they take lunch.
They do for kids.
Do you, did the elementary, okay.
The elementary takes lunch count in the morning.
Oh, okay, that's, oh, okay.
And if there's an adult that's supposed to be coming in, they're supposed to let them know who headed to.
I think they get a pretty good feel for the high school at least, who's, who leaves our, so they also know it. And, and I hate to say that, make this comment about, you know, if they're having hamburgers, they got a pretty good idea of how many students are gonna eat, or if you're having, uh.
Fish and eggs or shit.
Fifty, how many students are gonna eat, you know. They kinda get a feel for that as they go along, so.
They're pretty good about that, yeah.
Did you say five cents or ten cents increase?
We're debating that.
I haven't just got it yet.
And would it be like ten cents for breakfast increase and lunch, or?
Five, the five cents was on breakfast and lunch both, each meal, that's what I put together here.
Free and reduced prices are set by the feds, we don't have any control of that, we only can control our pay.
And those are a little way below the regular prices, so that's where we fall down. So do these prices cover that meal? Do you think?
Well, must not quite.
Well, if we're falling behind because of the free and reduced lunches, these, we might be making money on the kids that pay, I don't know.
You know, and it's not just food, it's, it's napkins and, I mean, it's other things besides just food products too, so, yeah.
You know, we had a couple of, of big repair items this year.
Yes, if there's an oven that needs to be repaired, yep.
Goes into the lunch program.
There are those, but, there are aligners on the lines, something for some lunch stuff.
If we get new floor mats for the lunch room, that comes out of the, you know, all those things have to be.
I'd go with the ten cents, I mean, it's still pretty cheap food, so I don't see anybody.
That sounds good, you're making a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a move, go to ten cents.
Is it ten cents in the morning, ten cents for lunch to per meal?
Per meal.
Second.
Okay, so moving second to approve the lunch prices per meal, ten cents. Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Mike? Bob?
Yeah.
Vicki?
Yeah.
Myself, no.
I think Casey's pizza's two thirty-two just for one piece, if I remember right.
Something to drink, you drink.
No.
Napkins are free though.
I went to Kirk's the other day, coffee was too bad.
Shouldn't afford it, some of these people can't.
Well, they're, look, free and reduced are not in the.
Uh, next item is, um.
Technology.
Technology purchases.
Mr. Salz, would you mind sitting down and talk about what we need to do and pass a plan down the road, as Andy catered when I rode in here? You know, I, I was really considering, we've got lots of staff laptops, so we look at three and a half, there's thirty-three and a half years, almost, I think it was February. Uh, Mr. Salz says he feels they're still operating pretty good shape, he thinks we can get by another year with those, and then of course, we're gonna have to follow that up. Probably next year, the idea is maybe replace those and then start with the, you know, get a little heavier into the staff repl- or replacement of student computers to keep them fairly updated. What we're proposing, what we're looking at is buying some desktop units, Apple units over in the elementary. Library over there, some of those are getting a little older, and then take the ones that come out of there, probably go to District Command's lab, because his are getting very outdated. We're looking at replacing Ima Jean's Jans and my computers, I think we're looking at about five years for those, something like that. I think mine was bought when I first came, so it's around five years old. The projectors, uh, those are basically to, you know, put on with the minials, uh, we've got, uh, basically, the, uh, new teachers coming in. Hopefully they're utilizing technology, like to make sure that we have those available in their, their classrooms, so. And then we're also looking in the bottom part, the, the biggest item on the bottom part is a server. We, we had talked about replacing a server, Mr. Salz reveals that we can, at this point, is he wants to replace the hard drive in it. Kinda update it that way, and after talking to a technician, they felt that was a better solution, at least at this time, and then there's a lot of miscellaneous things with cables, et cetera, listed there. Total will be around forty-one thousand five. We've got, uh, we had budgeted, within the budget, both in the elementary and the secondary, I think we budgeted around, I should look, closer around sixty thousand, I think, for that tool. We've got about, probably over fifty thousand dollars left, the read money that we can use, that's pretty flexible how we spend that. And then our Title V money, we've still got probably, I'd say fifteen, sixteen thousand now, we can spend money there, which next year's gonna be a little different. I was talking to Ima Jean today, I don't think they'll be able to spend that Title V money on technology, so it's gonna be a crap of style, we'll put next year.
So we better do it this year.
What's that?
So we better spend it there this year.
This year will be okay, but the, the next year, there, that was when the gentleman was out here, our Title V, he, he says, don't plan on doing that again, so.
Is there anything else you're gonna use Title V funds for this year, I mean, it's soon?
We talked, I think the Title V, what I put together, actually, I think part of that, we were looking at the minials, maybe doing some of that, we talked about cameras, the possibility of maybe doing cameras over in the elementary, and I'll talk about that later as a best possibility. I think we put the projectors on there, and just try to put some of that stuff through there to, you know, spend that money, I wanna.
I'm just wondering if we should get some more instead of stopping at this.
Mr. Salz, uh, he thought that this would keep us pretty well updated in that, that part of the, you know, as far as what we, to keep us up to date with what we have. Cause I asked, I asked him the same thing, we need to buy another, you know, carton, you know, of computers and that, and he thought we were in pretty good shape at this time.
So like, do they reuse your computers then?
We'll move those to another, probably some other place, yeah. They won't be thrown out, but they're, since they're working very long.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, hopefully we balance them.
I was just curious, whether they just got thrown away or whatever.
You know, we'll try to move them, they may end up in a classroom someplace, you know, where the, you know, kids doing an individual project or something, they, they use them, which is, you start running into the risk. Well, Bob burned your mic computer the other, last week, uh, stopped only three different times, goes up the screen, just went blank. You know, you, going blank is one thing, but I've had, we lose what you're doing, so I visited Tom a little bit and then, I think it ended up turning pretty subtle, I think it was actually that my, my, uh, mobile outlet script was, I think, was the problem. So I haven't had any trouble since we messed with that, but, um, I have had situations before, you lose, you lose an awful lot of important data, don't want that to happen, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the technology purchases of our candidate.
I'll second.
Okay, then moving second, room call. Vicki?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, reports. No, pardon them, sorry, pardon them.
I'd like to skip this one, but you're probably gonna talk about it. As I indicated, what I, I sent out there, you have a sheet where there's, I think there were four bids from Sioux City, one bid on the tarp floors, on wood floor. The bids on the, you're looking at a tile, something possibly like that, or if you've seen what's actually on there on the floor now, it's, it's probably about half that thick, which is, I think, what they're actually proposing to put down. I've spent time talking to the gentleman from Sioux City, uh, I mean, they're proposing a couple of different scenarios. One of them would be just put a floor over the tarp floor where we're at now. They will not guarantee that, I don't think that's a good solution at this time. They would, after I, I talked to him about putting plywood down, they would put a plywood subfloor down and then put some type of a tile like this, and that's the difference kind of in the quality of those tiles. After visiting with the gentleman, hard floors, that floor would be a maple floor, it would be very similar to what we have in the, in the pirate gym, it's a plain surface, it is not as high quality of, of wood as a third grade maple. Which is a little less expensive, but if, if you look at the, the bid prices, we're looking at about a wood floor for a little bit less money than what the others are. And I guess at this point in time, with what I've learned about those wood floors, a gentleman told me that I think West Point was a place before like this, and I did not know that, I've been in the West Point gym many times. I didn't know that they'd done that to the floor. They had done it at, uh, Sand Hills, Gail actually talked to a Gail, it's custodian out there, she said their, theirs has worked very well for them. I think they've done this at Horizon Mill School in Carney, and they've done it too, I, I think it's at the auditorium in David City, we all seem to have pretty good luck with it. I guess at, at this time, with the, with the difference in the floors, what we begin here now, I, I, I should make this comment. This type of floor probably gives us more latitude in how we use it, I mean, where we have constants in there, we have graduation in there, those types of things. If you could do that like the floor we have in there, wouldn't have to cover it. If we go with that wood floor, we're gonna have to do something probably with tarp, but you're gonna have a better floor. I did talk to a gentleman, he stopped the other day with a new tarp, and this, of course, it'd be a little more expensive, they roll out, he says, they, they don't, they, they're actually roll out in six foot rolls, they kinda fit together, you don't have to worry, you don't have to tape them down. And worry about people tripping on them, that's gonna be something we probably look at if we go to the wood floor, but my, my recommendation at, at this point, with the cost of the floor, and I think what we would give would be to go with the wood floor. Now, installation of that, the gentleman told me it would probably, it could be mid-September, uh, they'll have to bring the wood, it has to sit for like ten days or something, get acclimated, humidity and that, before they will lay down wood floor. They're also busy right now until school gets started, but they redo gym floors, like we're gonna have ours done, but new, uh, wax and whatever you call that stuff, huh? They're involved with that until school starts, and then they've got two or three other projects where they're installing floors. And he said he thought they could have us on that floor by the middle of September. Which I think, you know, if we start off the school year and using it for PE classes and that, we're gonna have to take a week or so in there, we just keep, basically keep people out of the gym, which we could, I mean, we can work around that, that time of year.
What are you gonna do, are you gonna have the tarp down there all the time then?
No. I think there would be a lot, there would be a lot of traffic through there, Chris, and then that, that's a problem to, to deal with. One of the things we're also looking at, and, and actually, the guy that was here that had the tarp that rolls out, and we talked to him last year about putting some, some mats by the front doors, they, they've got this mat that's a little, really porous and, and we're thinking about putting something like that there, because it really collects gravel and stuff. I think we'd, we'd get a lot of that off the shoes if we, you know, put that in that entryway going into the target gym, so, you know, we, we would eliminate a little bit of that problem, you know. But I, I, I agree with what you're saying, I've, I've had gyms like that before where that's a traffic area. You know, when I go through there, I, I guess what I, my statement last week was, you know, it's a great teaching point for kids with geometry, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. That's probably the only time kids will understand that point in geometry, because I'll guarantee you, if they're gonna go from walk in that entry there, and they wanna go to the band room, it's gonna be a straight line, it's not gonna be down to the corner and across the end.
No.
But, you know, that, that's just the way it's gonna happen.
How will that affect recess when it's nasty outside?
What's that?
How will that affect recess time with little people when it's?
They would probably come over and take their shoes off or bring, have tennis shoes, and, you know, if their shoes are clean, they can play, a lot of kids wear tennis shoes anyhow. They just, if there's, they've been out playing in the mud, then they're gonna have to take their shoes off, because it'll carry a lot of gravel and stones.
Let's take if we laid carpet just from the doors to the doorway, so guys walked on it, kinda dry your shoes and clean them before you got to, you know, not the whole area, but just ten foot wide strip or something, the doors to the.
We talked to a gentleman the other day about, we, we do something right in front of those doors, you could catch a lot of that traffic, you know, we're also talking about starting, I don't, you know where that post is out, out there in there? Putting that same material from there all the way up to where the floor starts, basically, so you have a fairly significant length of floor you walk across where you'd have the opportunity to get a lot of that stuff off your shoes, so. Be a little expense to it, I think might be worth at least looking into. We're gonna have to do something, because that floor will only go, a- as you go up that ramp right now, you know, when it breaks off level, the floor's only gonna go to where that break is. And then we're gonna have, that floor is gonna be built up about that far, whether we go with something like this or whether we go with a wood floor. Now, with the wood floor, what they're, they're gonna do is, he said they would have like, make an aluminum ramp that would run all the way across there and drop, you know, so they would go from that height down to the floor, whatever we have there. And I think we'll have to put plywood up that anyhow or something, but they will ramp that down for probably over a two foot space, so it just, you know, a little ramp up that raised about that far. So that's gonna be a, an issue with, maybe a little issue with older people, but I don't think we can get away from that. But we're gonna need to do something to cover that tarp floor from where that ramp stops, out at least to the doorway at the bottom. Said we might wanna look at going past that. And I was talking to Gail the other day, we got some tile that need replaced out there, those tile also have, have some asbestos in it, so thinking maybe we could cover them, we wouldn't have to worry about removing them, so.
If you had those tarp, six foot sections, and you had wrestling meats in there, you could cover the half, like, leave it, leave it off where the mat was.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're talking about, you, you, you could use it for other things, you know, uh, if we wanted to, uh, they said use it for wrestling meats, if we had, you know, a prom, they did a prom and aid down the floor, you could put.
Could use it up here.
Yeah, you could put them down there, and, and if, we'd have to get a rack with it, but those racks just roll, they roll where you wanna use it, roll.
Did he give you any port or any kind of a price on that?
I think the tarp would run about six thousand to cover that floor, I think that's what he said, and then the rack would be in addition, I think that's another twelve hundred or something, I believe he said.
That would carry all, all the loads just one at a time, and you roll it somewhere and pick up another one.
Is there any other way to get to the band room and the shop? Besides going in?
Not without going outside. Well, the band room, you could go around through the pirate gym, I'm not sure that's the option, I want kids.
Or the weight room.
Or the weight room, could go through the weight room, that's not a good option either, but the shop is either go this way, but people coming down there or going to the shop are gonna be walking on the edge of that.
Right.
That's not as big of a situation, other than they're pulling, bringing a lot of dust out of there, and not, but that's not more of a floor either. But the only other way is to go outside, which for, you know, we're gonna have to do that.
Those things spell good together?
Well, he told me they just lay next to each other and, or, you know, they lay flat on the seam, but they don't roll, they don't drag them or anything.
Well, could there be then, I'm just trying to think, so if you're coming from here and you got to go to band, you can walk along the side by the stage, right?
You can walk along the side by the stage, yes, from this area.
But you've got that one, I mean, you can't stay off the floor, because you've only got about that one.
Can walk in that much space.
But I mean, basically, you'll walk, you know, a, a three foot width, you'll keep most of the traffic off the way.
So then if you're having those, whatever those things fit together, then let's just make a sidewalk out of it.
Just leave it down all the time.
This is where you go.
Yeah, we can put a mat down most of the time.
I don't know, I'm just trying to.
But you gotta roll them down all the time when they practice tonight.
I know, but during the day, there could be a sidewalk in there.
Thing you're right, you run into with that is we got PE classes in there, you're not gonna want that mat there when you have PE classes.
Of course, it'll only take five minutes to unroll and unroll that.
That would be great.
Toilet floor mat.
Which will protect, protect the floor. I've, I've gone through that, Ray and I used to try and keep them off of that new tarp and floor. I would do this, this horse. I don't think, you could put up, you could put up fields and put tape across, I think walk over.
I can hear a pork breathing back and forth.
Yeah, I, I don't see the foot traffic being as much problem as, you know, when you set the tables in there and you bring the.
Yeah.
And that's why you didn't mat, right.
Those, those are the issues.
That's why I think if we get some type of mats going up that ramp, that's a good shoe cleaner. That's why I think if we get some type of mats going up that ramp, that's a good shoe cleaner, dryer, you know.
Yeah.
Be as good as anything.
You look at the Pirate Gym floor down here, the traffic that gets, say during basketball season, because people are coming in, they got solder in their shoes, and where do you find people after the ballgame? They're on the middle floor, pocket, you know, so that gets tracked out there. And that, I mean, it holds up pretty good.
Yeah, it does.
But, you run into the issues, well, like Alden's saying, if you've got somebody sitting there at a concert, and they do what I do, they're always shuffling their feet, you know, and they got gravel at the bottom of them or something, you know, then you get scratches. Or if you had a situation like this year when we had that farm show, when somebody set something down there and scooted it, I mean, that'd leave a pretty good gash.
Right. We'll have the mats down.
Yeah, you have mats down.
You know, we could put some, not that they're gonna help with the kids, but some signs up to, you know, clean your feet before going on the floor, so it might help with adults that come in, they might pay attention to them.
So the other ones besides this hard one are all bad?
That type or the, you know, basically what's on there, same type of that.
Does that one say what the thickness is, which one of these areas?
No, I don't know that.
That's basically the only difference of these is the thickness, so it's a half inch or five inches.
Or three quarters maybe.
Basically, if you buy the wood one and put the mat down, you're gonna have about the same as the wood one, because it's expensive.
I think both are better for our purpose here.
We know what we're gonna get with a wood floor with those. We don't know how they're gonna bring it in.
Build it to when you're playing basketball, and it's nice to jump on.
Both of them, either floor, we're gonna have to raise the baskets probably about that far. I don't think that's gonna be an issue, we can do that on the boards, they're there.
Just slide them up the frame.
Slide them up, yeah.
I don't think you can remount the whole back.
You don't have to.
I'll take the attachments to the wall.
Did you ever hear back from the company about a refund?
Well, I called them probably about, I don't know, around the first of July. I didn't get an answer, so I emailed him on the third. I have to know it's the third because he emailed me back today. Because I told him at that time, I, you know, we're gonna have a board meeting, the date we're gonna have, and I had to have information. I got an email from him today and said, well, we got a couple of options. So I emailed him back and said I didn't know my fourth line this afternoon, and I didn't get any offers. But I will keep hammering on, you know, one time, I didn't get it in writing at that time when I first started talking to him. I seem to remember it says something about thirteen thousand on the warranty, so I assume, I assume they're gonna pay something.
We could get enough just to cover the mat, so.
That'd be pretty good, because I think it was only thirty-two to start with.
So how's that gonna work with you, Corey, as far as scheduling events?
Actually, if they could be done around the middle part of September, that works out.
Be okay?
Just fine, so.
And you could do without it for a week or ten days, whatever it takes them to.
Yeah, they just, I mean, well, the coaches will make do.
Even with the PE classes?
Everybody's gonna make do if something can be done.
You know, at that time, hopefully we can go outside for PE, you know, you got rain or something, and they use the other gym, you know. It will work pretty good, so.
You mentioned, but just reinforced, Gail, check, because ultimately...
Yeah, I've talked to Gail.
Okay, yeah, you know, he's the one that's gonna have, ultimately keep it up for us, and we've got something, you know, so.
Well, hopefully it'll be easy enough to roll these things up that maybe the PE teacher, or the coach, or the players can roll it up.
Custodian's still gonna come back to...
Yeah.
He was gone the day the guy came last week, Gail wasn't here, but I did show him the sample, and I showed him a picture of the rack and talked to him about how it would fit together and how that would work.
I'm saying if we have some sort of event, and it's gonna come back to Gail, why'd you let that happen?
Oh, you mean if it gets damaged?
Yeah, if it gets damaged or something, you know. Of course, we'll blame Mr. Alden.
Yeah, I can blame him.
Well, I think that one thing that they need to do is they need to go through all the chairs and all the tables and make sure they're rubbered.
Did I talk to you about that?
Yeah, those on the bottom and they're in good shape, make sure they're all in good shape.
But you can always lose one during your concert.
Sure, but I mean, if you do that, with the mat there, it's still gonna reduce it, but you can still do it through that if you... And that's one good thing, we've got them, those tables aren't like the old tables, they're super heavy, you know. Private pianos, but it's on rollers, it's just...
It's on roller.
Yeah. That's the one that scares me the most.
Those are pretty...
I mean, should we buy the wood floor from Art Floors Incorporated for forty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, Ro Khawal, Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn, yes. myself, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Uh...
Yeah.
Vicki, yes.
The other thing too is those people never came up with the idea, but plywood, I mean, that was our idea, you know.
I brought up the floating thing to them after talking to Art Floors, and they said, well, we might be able to do that. And then they were a little hesitant, and they still wanted to, they still wanted to screw that bottom floor plywood down.
We want to include that tarp in with this.
I will do that this September. Because I might need to do a little research on that, look at, see if there's any other options out there.
You're gonna split this, since it requires down payment, will some of it go into this year's, and you're gonna split it, or are you gonna try to budget all of it?
I think when his bid hit you, or when I talked to him, he said about half of it will be paid ahead of time, and the other half after it's completed, I think, so. And we could spend a lot out of this year's budget, I think, if we can get it out, I mean, get it done.
Okay.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, otherwise, either way, if it's done over two years, at least budget wise.
We might need to spend a little money out of budget anyway.
Yeah, it looks like we're setting pretty good, so probably just get it done, I guess.
But it might have something else next year?
Yeah.
Well, next year we're gonna be looking at.
We're always looking at it.
That's gonna never end.
Probably must be next year too, I suppose.
After doing policies.
Yeah. Good luck.
Which room this year?
Okay, our reports, activity report.
I really don't have anything other than thank you for working first before. That's a huge, huge thing.
So I see there's added paper for donations, or some comment in there, I read, what was that? For the scoreboards at the school.
It said the community club meeting, Patty applied for two thousand dollars to the community club for the scoreboards, I think. I was just in that meeting, but I didn't get there in time to hear that part, I guess.
Yeah, I just read in the paper that there was something about...
Uh, principal's report.
I don't really have anything in addition, but Mrs. Vicki put out as part of the notes that went home.
She has any of the teacher schedules updated, can we get a copy of that then?
Okay, um, my report, I don't have anything at this hour, so.
We're not gonna leave their hour.
It's the only hour you get.
I don't, I don't have any, no. Does anybody else have any comments that they would like to make on the board?
I'll just throw in a couple, I mean, maybe you've been seeing that. One probably didn't, it's actually, one of the farm groups, Farm Rills, got to set up a task force or committee to look at school funding. And then the legislature had asked to deal this year, Senator Sullivan, they didn't have a meeting from out looking at education in Nebraska and the funding. And to go along with that, somebody heard me saying to pass that corn is king, and obviously Vicki's aware of it, Mike's aware of it, but these districts around here have been kind of living off of it, whatever. But if that corn price, it's virtually half of what it was a year ago, when it all set down there, our funds are debt, are reflected from that, so. But it'll, it won't show up right away, as Vicki being a past assessor, working in the office knows. When those evaluations stop going up, then we don't just have an automatic raise, so.
I want the neighbors to keep paying what they're paying, otherwise they're not gonna drop very soon.
Well, yeah, again, but it may drop. I'm just saying to heads up, corn, corns, I mean, it'll, it'll come around. I don't know on that senator deal, I have so much discussion, I was also wondering why Sullivan, some of the senators have a contact at our group, but I don't think anybody's, not gonna see anything on it, but anyway. That's, I just wanted to make sure.
We did a, they did a survey, I know I got a copy to fill out on the, uh, what do I wanna say? Their vision statement, you know.
From the senators?
Yeah, yeah, they were a part of, you know.
Okay, I think they just started having them, I remember like the last two months or so.
Yeah, I think Smarts had a meeting to get them out.
Yeah, they had some hearings around, and I don't think anything was up in this area.
I actually attended a, part of a meeting, I'll put it that way, in Norfolk on that visioning. They had a Gail from the State Department headed up, that was what it was about. And then last of the day, we met with one of the gentlemen from Dick Cobb at the State Department on that revision grant and that. So I left the one meeting to go to the other one. And then, like I said, there was a survey I filled out on that, from, I think it's from Kate Sullivan's, or the, per committee.
Okay.
They're trying to gather information.
Okay, Ms. Joel.
While we keep it short. Okay, Pirate Gym, I think we have a payment filed with, they did come and they put a code of kills on, and I think I was just talking to Corey, I think just denied, and I think it's covered finally, and that code of kills, and I don't think it had one or two codes, but I think it's covered now, so.
So they stand that, or we...
No, they'll build us again, so. Louis and Clark signs with Newcastle, not gonna be a part of the POMs anymore. Well, I went back to Love Sides, they're just gonna do, if they miss this POMCA, you know, just be able to put that right over top of that part. So we'll have that changed, hopefully, that is ordered. Banners, I did order, you know, the banners that are on the west side of the gym for state championships and runner-ups. I ordered one for the wrestling for this year, both the runner-up and then the dual runner-up. It's all on one banner combined. I also ordered one for, we had a golf runner-up in two thousand twelve, we hadn't done anything with. And then, it was pointed out to me, actually Mr. Clusey pointed this out to me one time. Plainview was a co-one act champion, I believe in nineteen seventy-nine, and there's not anything up to for that. So I ordered that one, I got on the NSA website and found it, so.
There you go.
There were like three schools, so I did order that one, I think will be up to date. We've talked about signs for the doors going out. While I was at Love Sides, I also did that, just be a sign to go up on two of those doors going out there, about please watch your step as you leave, or as you exit, or something like that, I think I said on it, so. We'll have those, the elementary cabinets, a young man that's supposed to come and look at those. We did run into a little bit of a snag, and Gail, being a new custodian, went to an asbestos training. And part of the training, they were talking about different tiles and that, and the guy showed an example of this tile, and Gail said, that looks a lot like the tile. I'm sure elementary, and the guy came out and tested, guess what? It tested positive, so we do have asbestos in that, but we have an option. If we remove the whole entire sink, I think we're, I think we're gonna be able to do, or the whole top. I think we're gonna be able to do it. The guy comes out, gonna look at it, if he doesn't wanna do it, maybe Gail will do it. If we can not, I'm just, I think we can get by with doing it. He says if you can get it out with disturbing it, so if we can just get that whole thing out there in one piece, we'll still do that.
Are you gonna backsplash that too?
Yeah.
So any of put new sinks in, or?
We're gonna do new sinks in those three rooms also, yeah.
That, do we do that before school starts?
I'm hoping so. I think, I talked about the revision grant earlier. EMC Insurance notified us, and I had a gentleman out here to inspect the boilers, he was taking some pictures. Got a letter from EMC that wants to do some concrete work, I think. We've got some sidewalks where there's a couple placeboards a little high, so Gail's trying to get that lined up. We get it now, we're just gonna have to, you know, chip out, break out a couple of sections for it to do a concrete in it. I'm just gonna hand one of these out to you. Dave from, the guy that does our cameras, DSN and Viral Systems, was here just the other day, emailed this to me. I'm not, right now I'm not posing anything with this, I'll just give it to you as information. We had kind of looked at putting a camera over there, we had a fire alarm pulled a couple of times this year over there, about maybe putting cameras so we can kind of watch that. We have to put in a new DVR, we can't hook it up with the one we have over here, so we've got the expense of the DVR, which is the sixteen twenty-five, and then even if we went with one camera. And what Dave did is, he kind of did some different things. He did some cameras to go outside for the playground area, and I put them all on this, so. But take a look at that, maybe next month I'll come back and maybe talk a little bit about that, okay.
Should it cover the, near the outside, it'd cover the greenhouse too, then?
Well, yeah, we could probably shoot one from this angle over to the greenhouse. We have one from the BOAG that looks over that way.
Oh, it does, right, okay, okay.
But we could maybe point one of these, or also have one from, maybe over on the elementary building, point it that way to cover the other side of it too, if we decide to go with that. We would have enough, with this eight video DVR, we would have enough places on that DVR for some cameras there.
Move Mark down the football field, we can maybe start replaying it. Well, speaking of that, we will, well, we just got, not to draw off, but we got Conference Track next year, I, you know. I don't know what it costs for those, for the timer deals, but, because we'd be eligible for District Track meets too sometime if we had... You know what I'm talking about, the...
They're expensive.
They're expensive.
Accu-time, or Accu-track, or whatever they're called. They're pretty expensive.
No, twenty-five thousand.
Okay, sorry.
Can you do something like the wrestlers do with their scoring system, that like five schools do together? Because they usually don't have, that may track me, exactly, everybody has one big beat, that's...
Can you rent those?
You can, but we discussed it at the NSA review meeting, and I can't remember what the cost was, and there are a lot of companies that do it, because they wanted to try to have every district set up with that, but there wasn't even enough people or enough companies to have them available. And I don't know what the maintenance and what all it means on that stuff. I don't know, probably was looking at it, I don't know how far they ever got.
So West Holden, but that is, they just got a camera that they always set there, is that something?
No, they've got a, they've got an Accu-track or something.
They had a deal where all of eight guys had to, had to print it out, print it out of there. Numbers, and then you can look at the video and see where the plate, but that's not Accu-track.
It's not Accu-track.
Gives you the whole spiel.
Right.
Do you know what those are called, Corey? I mean, that might be something to check into, I don't...
I'd have to go back and look, I know I've got it in my notes in the office, so.
It might be just something, I mean, I don't...
And I can, I think Harris maybe has one, I can contact him and ask him about it, so.
Okay.
Along with the track, I did call the gentleman that did the track. We got just a couple little cracks starting on this one curb down on this end, so. He said, well, they're out in this area, people saw, look at it, do anything to it right now.
So these cameras, they don't do any night vision type stuff?
Those would not probably be, unless they're outdoor ones. Well, the one inside...
Well, hopefully it wouldn't be one.
It shouldn't be that, yeah.
Unless they broke it.
Yeah.
Probably supply it out there.
Light out there maybe to see.
Yeah, light, like that light, just get a picture.
Talked about the elementary music position earlier, didn't we? Para positions, we had that add, and assistant custodian position in the paper this week. Possibility of maybe looking higher two paros, and Mark Petrie asked him the other day, and said he voted resign. So he's gonna stay until we get something higher, but really, I, I won't land. Reaching out, I wasn't too surprised with it, so. But he's, like I said, he's gonna stay with us until we get something. So we will, we'll look, we'll somebody for that.
Have you gotten a lot of in for the para positions?
Right now I've just got two in and one more, first picked one up today. When they back James, he sent one to somebody.
So is this something that we need to talk about, him resigning? I mean, is that his decision, or is there a reasoning behind it?
No, it's his decision. I, no, there's no issues with that, but, no, it was, I just, I don't feel, I might place me to say that.
Well, that's why I wanted to go to the conversation or something.
No, I don't want to make that impression.
Well, I just heard something over the... Well, I just heard something over the weekend and I, I don't know whether there's any truth to it whatsoever, I don't want him forced out if he doesn't want to be forced out.
I was not real surprised, but a little surprised. Okay. I've done a question, one question.
Father, I'd like to turn the meeting over to you because I need to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion going to executive session for reasons of an issue that's come up. That's it?
Okay. We need to vote on that?
Of fairness, an issue that has come up?
Yeah, what's this pertaining to?
Personal issue.
Personnel?
Yes, personal issue.
Personal.
Personal.
Yes, personal.
Damaging personnel?
Yes, I'm gonna talk about myself, all right? You know, Korea?
As long as it begs, begs, yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Nice.
Yes.
Yes.
And you'll keep that when they come up, okay?